Sorry, we're having internet difficulties. It'll be just a few more seconds. It's Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, meeting of the Eureka City Council. We're glad you're all here. And if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if we could have a roll call, please? Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here.
Okay, and with that, look here. Is there a report out of closed session?
Yes, Mayor, today there is a report out of closed session in the products liability case on a motion from Councilmember Fernandez that was seconded by Councilmember Moulton. The council voted unanimously to opt out of the settlement in that case and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary documents to effectuate that opt-out.
Great, thank you. Okay, and before we begin my announcements, I would like tonight to I would like tonight to take a moment for the thousands of people that are being killed every day in war, killed unnecessarily. So if we could just take a moment, and they're dying every day, every day, both sides. So if we could just take a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Now we're going to move on to Mayor's announcements, and we have a proclamation, national hunger and homelessness this week, and that is you, Councilmember Contreras, and I believe Nezze Wade is here to receive that proclamation and her cohort. If you want to come up?
I'm Nezze Wade.
Hi, Nezze.
I'm Nayeli Ramirez.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2023 is being homeless is not a crime and housing is a human right, and whereas people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness, and whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Eureka, and no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head, and whereas the California Center for Rural Policy reported in their Humboldt County food assessment that hunger is a daily experience that more than 31% of adults experience food insecurity while 37% of households with children experience food insecurity. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck, and whereas while homelessness creates barriers to assessing essential services such as affordable healthcare, housing, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contribute to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night, and whereas the aim of the National Coalition for Homeless is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root causes of it, to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing support services as well as meals, food supplies, clothing, and hygiene products to the homeless and the hungry. And now, therefore, I, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim that November 13th through 21st of 2023 is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week and encourage all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems.
Thank you. Yeah, Nezze, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Would you like to wait? I'm not prepared for this, but it's a good idea. Oh, okay. Awareness Week is a limited time, and we are, I'm sure, aware, all of us, that hunger and homelessness are with us all the time. The statistics are staggering. One in six children in the United States live in poverty. One in five have no idea where their next meal is coming from. And in Humboldt County, I think, I watched the Board of Supervisors meeting today, and there was a similar proclamation, and I was very heartened by the commentary and the understanding of how much this matters, that we have this time of educating people about hunger and homelessness. That's the purpose of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, is to help educate folks around the kinds of things that are happening in over 700, I don't know, maybe 800 communities. These kinds of things are happening where it's a drive to incorporate the community in finding ways to bring volunteers, donations, support to their local organizations. And there are ways that we can do that here. Some of you have probably read the most recent newsletter for the Food Bank, Food Notes, and Carly Robbins, the executive director's column there, where the Food Bank is serving more people now than they've ever served, 16,000 a month, 12% of the Humboldt County population. And it's staggering when you think about what kind of a chore that is, and we know those of us in organizations who work with serving people food and support for all of their needs, it's a huge undertaking, and there's a lot of organizations that are doing this for hunger and homelessness, and it's a wonderful thing. But if you want to participate in a way that you can help with hunger and folks that are really challenged because they don't have enough resources, the Food Bank is offering a challenge from now until the end of December. It's called Hunger Fighter Challenge. You can go to their website, which is www dot food for people dot org slash Hunger Fighter Challenge, and as an organization, a department, a school, a family, a business, anyone, can form a team to ask their neighborhood, their community, their friends and neighbors, colleagues, to support donations, financial donations or food donations that will make it possible for them to actually have more flexibility in purchasing foods that they need and in supporting people who come to them for all these services. So that's one way we can all participate. And if you're not supporting an organization like ours, AHA, where we have a lot of support from people who provide donations for us, and we are asking constantly for them, if you don't have someone to support like that, support the Food Bank. It's a really important opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do. You're appreciated. So moving on to the Great American Smokeout with Councilmember Fernandez, and I believe there's someone here to receive this proclamation? Nice to see the kids. Welcome. Okay, you're on.
In recognition of the Great American Smokeout, November 7th, 2023. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit tobacco for at least one day, and whereas each year nearly 34,000 California adults die from smoking and 20,300 kids become new daily smokers, and whereas vaping electronic cigarettes has made smoking more attractive to youth and harder to quit, and whereas electronic cigarettes create hazardous waste in the form of plastics, semiconductors, heavy metals, and lithium-ion batteries for which there is no established disposal or recovery procedure, and whereas 14% of 7th graders in Arcata have tried electronic cigarettes, and 10% of 11th graders are regular users with more than double that rate in non-traditional high schools, and whereas there are many resources to help people quit using nicotine, including Kickit, California, and a special program that youth can access through their schools called WhyVape.org. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of Eureka, California hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 16th, 2023, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking in one day, just start with day one.
Did you want to say a few words?
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers, Councilmember Fernandez. You know, we appreciate this opportunity on an annual basis to raise awareness about the problem of nicotine addiction and let people know there are resources out there to help them quit, including through the Kickit, California, and also that WhyVape resource that's for schools and that students can access through their schools to help address nicotine addiction. But it's going to take all hands on deck to solve this problem. So many young people are smoking now because of the flavored vapes, and there's a ready-made resource for you. In August, the County Board of Supervisors adopted a tobacco retail license policy and publicly encouraged all the cities to join forces in this effort. These policies are proven effective in preventing illegal sales of tobacco and reducing youth use of tobacco products. And now for you to hear from the real voices that matter right now, these are members of Eureka High School's Friday Night Live Club.
Wonderful. Yay.
Good evening. We are here from Friday Night Live from Eureka High, and we are here to talk tonight about the issues we are seeing in our school relating to the use of vape, alcohol, and marijuana. In the last few years that we've been here, we have been seeing an increase of students our age using these drugs in particular, as well as incidents we've heard about in middle school relating to vaping and marijuana usage, and seeing it in real time in school bathrooms and locker rooms.
This leads us to wonder where these youth are getting their products from. If more people not only cared about the mental health of the youth, but educated them more, helped guide them to a better path, actually took action to help these students, it would lead them to a healthier and happier and more productive adults, ultimately improving our county and our city.
This leads us to wonder where the youth gets from the produce. If more people, people don't care about the mental health of the youth, but educate them more, help them, to guide them to a better path, and actually took action to help them, the students too, it will lead to a healthy, healthier, and productive adult, ultimately improving our county and city, our city.
Thank you. We're sorry, he just... Incidents of drug-related deaths from Humboldt, or in Humboldt from 2005 to 2021 had been the highest, it had been the highest in 2021, with the biggest contributor being fentanyl making up 37 out of 70 deaths being caused by fentanyl. The largest contributor in previous years had been mixing drugs with fentanyl, with fentanyl being one of the smaller contributors until 2019, where it started to increase. It was only seven deaths, 2020 had eight, so how come 2021 had 37? That may not seem like a significant number, but for the size of our county, it is. We've had a total of 879 drug-related deaths on the charts since 2005. 59% of deaths were male and 41% of deaths were female. So what does that say about our county? How many of those were here in Eureka, and how many of them were youth?
That's all you got. Well, thank you so much for being here, you guys. We appreciate you. Nice work. Nice job. Okay, and then for my Mayor's Reports, I have three things. The first thing I want to mention is that, you know how we've been having a lot of cruise ships come in, and sometimes we get letters of appreciation for that, and so I did get a letter, and I thought it was so cool, I'm going to share it with you all. This is from John Preston Bailey, United States District Court, so he's from back east. So, "Dear Mayor Burgel, my wife and I recently visited Eureka while traveling on the seaborne venture cruise ship," excuse me, "we were struck not only by the beauty of your city," of course, "but the warmth and friendliness of your citizens. What a warm welcome. Thank you so much for your hospitality, John and Lydia Bailey." And I just want to thank everybody for, you know, when people come, you know, we do. We're kind people in our city, and I love that about us, so keep it up. And thanks for everybody that made that happen. And then, secondly, December 2nd is our town, last town hall of the year. It will be on substance abuse disorder. We're calling it Substance Abuse Disorder: The Never-Ending Pandemic. And so there'll be flyers going up for that very soon. And with that, I shall invite up Ashley and Jacob from PETA to give a little talk about their quilt. Welcome. Or maybe no, Jacob. We're good.
Just Ashley, but this is Jacob, and thank you so much for having us. Yeah, thank you all. Thank you for welcoming us to this very beautiful city. My name is Ashley Byrne, and I'm here on behalf of People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals to talk about the quilt that is hanging in the hall that will be displayed here for the next month. We hope that your citizens will find our quilt to be a vibrant, creative depiction of compassion for fish and other marine life. The quilt is composed of more than 100 unique squares, and it's still growing as people's awareness of the plight of fish increases. Each square reminds us that fish are sensitive, smart, and much misunderstood beings who, like other animals and like us, experience pain and joy and have a desire to live, and that they are as deserving of respect as the cats and dogs who share many of our homes. We know so much about fish now that we didn't in the past, including the fact that they talk to each other with squeaks and chirps and other low-frequency sounds that are much like those of birds. They can recognize themselves in a mirror, something that scientists feel is the gold standard test of animal intelligence. They learn to avoid painful experiences, just as we do. And some fish even tend little well-kept gardens, build underwater nests, and collect rocks to create hiding spots where they can safely rest. They've been shown to react positively to classical music. They don't tend to enjoy rap. They recognize and remember other fish, and even know when they're being watched and alter their behavior accordingly, which we might say shows more self-awareness than some humans even. And like elephants, fish have great memories. For instance, salmon can remember the smell of their birthplace after several years and follow the scent back home. They can learn to use tools and, in some cases, have even outperformed primates with their learning abilities. They have demonstrated the ability to understand simple addition and subtraction. And every fish has a unique personality with likes, dislikes, and social networks. They have nervous systems that register and respond to pain to the same extent as dogs, cats, and other animals. Julian Pittman, a professor at the Department of Biological and Environmental Sciences at Troy University in Alabama, said that "the neurochemistry between fish and humans is so similar, it's scary." Yet, despite all of this, over 1 trillion fish are killed each year by the fishing industry, and for most of them, death is painful and slow. And they're not alone, as hundreds of thousands of turtles, rays, dolphins, and even whales are killed every year by discarded or lost fishing nets, lines, and equipment. Many participants who contributed squares to this quilt submitted their personal stories about why they no longer eat or catch fish. A Girl Scout troop from Austin, Texas submitted several patches after being inspired by a discussion with a former commercial fisher turned vegetarian about the damage fishing does to animals and the environment. A quilter from Winnipeg, Manitoba, shared a story about how she and her grandfather stopped fishing because of the cruelty involved. They found other kinder ways to spend quality time together instead. In 2022, the American cartoonist Harry Bliss, who has illustrated 25 covers for The New Yorker, submitted a square as an addition to the quilt. His square depicts a fish with a wonderful John Muir quote that says, "And through him as through a window, I have ever since been looking with deeper sympathy into all fellow mortals." Jean-Michel Cousteau, a French oceanographic explorer and film producer, also contributed a beautiful square with a photograph of a scuba diver and shark urging people to protect the oceans and themselves. As our quilt measures over 300 square feet total, we will be displaying three of its six panels here in Eureka for the next month, and we hope everyone will take some time to look at the details of the display and reflect on ways that we can all choose to live kindly. We'd like to thank Mayor Burgel, who has graciously worked with us to welcome our quilt to Eureka, and highlight the amazing and complex lives of fish. Thank you all again so much for welcoming us and our quilt project to your city. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we shall move on to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So do we have anybody from the audience here to speak? Public comment? Come on up. Yeah, go ahead, Nezze, and then we'll get you to next. Thanks.
I'll be quick. I just want to tell the city thank you very much. AHA's mobile showers are coming back on Tuesday under the bridge, and our services will be sparse in comparison to what they used to be because we need your support as always to be able to have space and funds to do these kinds of things. We hope that the community knows that we're there and will also support getting folks there to take advantage of the services, so thank you. It's good to have a place to be, and I would love to have that for all of our folks that are unhoused. They need a place to be. So we need safe spaces, whether it's tiny house villages, campgrounds, safe parking, all of those things are possible, and now they're almost demanded by the lack of other options for housing, and there's just not enough, period. So there will never be enough. We just have to use what we have, and we hope that we can do this all together. So thank you.
Thank you, Nezze. Okay, so come on up. And were you going to speak separately then?
We are going to speak separately.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Olivia Fox. I've been emailing. I'm a local student and one of the co-authors of the resolution you'll be seeing in front of you. We hope to see this resolution passed at the next council meeting. We collaborated with the local Jewish community members, members of our organization, and a community member with decades of experience of peacework in this area as well as experience on a city council. We have planned meetings with more communities, community members beyond what we have already done because the need for peace is urgent and goes far beyond the city resolution. Every time we met to work on a resolution, we had to update the death toll, to update the number of displaced people. I cannot express how upset, the word upset doesn't even do any justice, it's like the biggest underwhelming word ever, how spread I am that my tax dollars are being used to fund a war, and that my tax dollars have been used to fund any war, any violence, and any perpetuation of colonial violence. We are presenting something safe, something that condemns the most recent violence and something that is far from radical. What you see in front of you is a far more gentle version than what we originally wrote, and honestly, the bare minimum. Community consensus is important, and a resolution passed by a city must be supported by as much as the city as possible, and I understand that, but I want more. To be frank, I don't think the resolution we originally presented to you or Arcata was radical. Demanding ceasefire is not radical. On the city website, you state that the land that Eureka rests on is known as the Wiaot language as Daruigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiaot and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges that the Wiaot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. We ask that you stand by this acknowledgement by taking a stance against violence now. There's a collective punishment being inflicted on the Palestinian people right now. Collective punishment is considered a war crime underneath international law. The UN warned that the relocation of Israeli forces required could cause devastating humanitarian consequences, and that is exactly what I am seeing now. Before this most recent outbreak in violence, the state of Israel's blockade on Gaza had caused a 42% unemployment rate. 84% of the population relied on humanitarian aid. Over 80% fell below the poverty line. Over 60% were food insecure, and access to medical care was declared to be at a crisis level by the UN. And now, every day, more lives are lost, more family lines are erased, and tragic histories being used to justify the continued violence rather than be used to promote peace. I hope that the city of Eureka takes seriously the entreaty of never again and knows that the historical...
Thank you, Olivia. Your time is up. Sorry. You could email that to us, though, if you'd like. Thank you. And friends, so I know it's awkward, but if we could use hands, just because it takes time and sometimes it makes people feel awkward and unwilling to come up, so I appreciate that. Thank you for understanding. Hi, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Jasmine Jolly. I'm a local student, and I am also a co-author of the resolution you see in front of you. We are calling for an immediate ceasefire in Palestine and Israel now. While writing this resolution, we have been thoughtful about the diversity of the community that we live in. One of my largest goals right now is to foster unity among the different communities that I am so, so lucky to be a part of. Right now, what I see from loved ones and from the world as a whole is grief and fear and anger, and I am doing what I can to channel those feelings into meaningful action. My mission for peace and for freedom and for nonviolence goes far beyond the passage of this resolution. I have been extraordinarily intentional and considerate of all perspectives over the last four weeks and over the years, as I have learned more about Israel, its creation, and the violence that has ensued since. During the pogroms that followed the Bolshevik Revolution, my family fled to this country. Their ages might have been estimated, their names were changed. The family that I had in Europe during World War II, there was one survivor, one person. I do not take my history lightly. I was raised to be proud of my Jewish heritage, and I am doing everything I can to be thoughtful in the words that I choose and the way that I present myself. In the memory of my family who fled and who died, of the memory of my family who lived in fear and who were murdered, I have to stand with Palestine now. What I see from Israel and from Zionist sources is an intentional weaponization of the Holocaust, the memory of the Holocaust, and of Jewish suffering. How dare they use my history to perpetuate their narratives and to justify the atrocious actions? I see how they try to use the grief and the fear that we are all feeling to convince us that these acts of evil are necessary or somehow permissible. I see how fear of antisemitism has been used to convince people that we need Israel, and how it has been used as a justification for Israel's constant illegal expansion. I cannot allow my fear... I cannot allow my fear and my sadness to render me immobile and silent in the face of loud, explicit, public evil. I stand with the Israeli protesters who are calling for a ceasefire and for a hostage exchange. I stand with the brave young Israeli people who are refusing to be conscripted into the military of a colonist entity because I know that a government is not its people. We call on the city to pass this resolution because we care about our community. We want our community here to thrive, to succeed, and for members of our community to be able to rely on and trust each other. We want to be able to rely on, trust, and respect our elected officials and the bodies that represent us. I've heard that some feel a resolution offers little real action to help people living through this crisis, but what else are we going to do? Imagine the impact that Eureka could have. Richmond was the first city to pass a resolution like this. Providence, Rhode Island just followed in suit. What if we're next? If enough small cities pass resolutions, might a larger one? If enough small voices speak out against oppression, might we finally see systematic change to protect us?
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, Mayor and Eureka City Council. I'm Danielle, lead organizer of Decriminalize Nature Humboldt. I wanted to just speak on the behalf of Decriminalize Nature Humboldt and the community thanking you for voting to decriminalize entheogens on the 17th of last month. And as promised, Decriminalize Nature Humboldt is organizing a free educational event for the Eureka community. This will be on December 1st, which is a Friday. It will be from 6:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. It will be at the Labor Temple, which is 840 East Street. We are going to have different experts speaking about the different entheogens and how to safely work with them in a therapeutic way. We are going to have speakers on Sulicybin Mushrooms, Iboga, Ayahuasca. And Dr. King will be speaking about the neuroscience of psychedelics. And we're going to be updating our website, decriminalizernaturehumboldt.com, and our Instagram, decriminalizernaturehumboldt. And our Facebook is down right now, so it's not going to be updated. I also wanted to hand in to you some thank you cards. So we hope that you enjoy reading these personalized messages. And, yeah, that's it. Thanks again.
Thank you. That's very thoughtful. Do we have? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Ian Fox. I am also here to advocate for the resolution that has been presented to you. I'm not nearly as knowledgeable as my friends are about this, about what's going on, but I just wanted to offer my perspective as a Eureka native. I was born here, I grew up here. And growing up here, I came to know and learn of the kind and caring community we have here. And through growing up here, I have observed, especially recently, all that all of you have done to help better our community. And it is for these reasons that I believe it is imperative that the city of Eureka call on the federal government to condemn the acts that are happening in Gaza and to demand a ceasefire. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Micah Starr. My home is in Eureka. I work in the schools here. I'm proud of being Jewish. I came here independently of the other folks who spoke about Palestine, but I appreciate what they all said, similar family history to the individual who shared their history before. I wanted to, I didn't prepare a statement, but I wanted to ask everyone to just think on a personal level for a moment. I haven't read the resolution they've drafted, although I do personally support a ceasefire. I wanted to ask everyone to think on a personal level if these were your families or your children. Because I know how much it hurts to see children suffering here, and I can only imagine what they're going through, you know, in Palestine and Israel. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Hello.
Hi, my name is Camden. I'm also a local student. I came here in solidarity with the message that was supposed to be shared completely with my friends here. So I'm actually just going to read the last aspect of a message that we would like to share. This is short, but I hope that the city of Eureka takes seriously the entreaty of never again and knows that the historical memory of the Holocaust means fighting ethnic cleansing, antisemitism, and apartheid everywhere. As the American Jewish Organization, If Not Now, said that, quote, "October 7th made clear that occupation and apartheid doesn't keep anyone safe. We will keep working towards a future where Israelis and Palestinians can live in true equality, justice, and peace, where no one needs to fear for their life. The first step towards that future is ceasefire." Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Come on up. Not yet. No, that's an agenda item. Okay. All right, anyone else from the audience here for public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom? There is quite a few. So we've got, is that Heather?
Heather Hyde. Heather Hyde. I'll come back. Oh, there we go.
Hello, hi, sorry, I was unable to unmute myself. Say thank you again, Eureka City Council and city for giving back the ancestral ground to the Wiat. I'm Native American. I'm also living in Humboldt County. I'm a student, and I fiercely work for Native Americans and restoring rights and the culture. And I'm wondering what else could be done for the Native American community to give back as California is quite progressive with changing laws and legislation, and California also leads the way, leads the way for other states for movements as well. And then I also wanted to thank you again for allowing KETA to be there. I'm a supporter. I've been a lifelong activist and a vegan since I was a child. Yes, I used to eat a lot of meat and fish, but I realize the animals that I love, the fish that I swim with, the fish that I have as pets, were the same animals and creatures that I ate. So I found myself to be a hypocrite, and I stopped eating such. And also, when you're eating, you know, fish from the fish, sorry, eating the fish, eating the ocean life, you're really deteriorating the rest of lives for humans as well. So I also wanted to bring up, there was something, I went to a private Catholic school growing up in San Antonio, and going back to the, and you suggest that the city look into a program that I once had when I was a child. There was a woman named Miss Case, and she would come with organs and different things to show the students, the youth, to instill fear for smoking cigarettes and doing other drugs to see what happens to their organs, their brain. It was actually quite impactful, because I've never had an interest in touching any of that stuff ever since a child, seeing what your organs go through, what happens, situations such as that. And then also, I pick up, when I do trash pickups at the beach, it's utterly horrendous, the amount of cigarette box that I pick, buckets full, you know? So it would be great, I even thought doing some guerrilla marketing signs and make-
Thank you, Heather. We appreciate you being here. Your time is over. Thank you.
Carly Rojas.
By the way, my name is Carly Rojas, a staff member and graduate student at Cal Poly Humboldt. This is a comment in support of the proposed resolution, calling for an immediate ceasefire on Palestine and an end to the violence, including an end to American aid to the genocide. Your land acknowledgement claims that it, quote, "demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism." I would like to bring up the lecture, "What Good Is a Land Acknowledgement?", available on the Cal Poly Humboldt Native American Studies Department YouTube page, which underscores that a land acknowledgement is meaningless without action. Israel is a self-proclaimed settler state, currently carrying out the very same project of genocide upon an indigenous population, Palestinians, as the Eureka City Council acknowledges is part of the city's history, as, quote, "past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices," end quote. Projects of settler colonialism and genocide do not happen in a silo and are not disconnected. The United States is directly complicit in funding the genocide, the apartheid, and the Holocaust of Palestinians, as well as funding the Israeli settler colonial state and their war crimes, including collective punishment. Current death tolls include at least 10,022 Palestinians, which is including 4,104 children. Every constituency in the United States, including cities and municipalities, are complicit in this genocide. I myself am a Maitaiino descendant person, one of the first indigenous peoples genocided by the global project of colonialism. The genocide of Palestinians in Gaza matters to me personally. It matters to me as a resident of Humboldt County, and it is directly connected to every person here. We must call a ceasefire on Palestine and an end to the violence. We must call for an end of American aid. The city of Eureka can take effective action against this genocide, against this complicity in genocide, directly by passing a resolution that supports a ceasefire and the end of American funding of this genocide. I stand with Palestine. I call for an immediate ceasefire. I call for the city of Eureka to stand up against a genocide and pass the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly.
You're not bothering me. I just have a lot going on.
Heather, you're not muted, hon. Thank you. Althea?
Hey there, everybody. So lots of things I'm here to comment on tonight, but my non-agenda comment is that the city's Transportation Safety Commission has not met since July. You know, we, several of us went on the walk audit with Dan Burden. We have not had a chance to discuss that walk audit since then. You know, and then today, you know, there were three collisions just today, including one that was fatal. And the Transportation Safety Commission really should be able to follow up on these collisions, find out what happened, you know? See how we can be better with this. But part of the issue with that, back in April, I asked Scott Elsmore if the commission could have access to the city's collision data. I was told that we could not because the collision data was proprietary. This is not transparent. That's not in the public interest for our collision data to be proprietary, to be secret, to be something that cannot be obtained by interested members of the public. So I am asking the city of Eureka and the police department to make the city's collision data public so that we can review this stuff and have a safer city for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Althea. Ash?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
I guess I can't do video, huh? Okay, anyways, just wanted to weigh in on the, what was it, the request for a proclamation on Israel and Palestine and whatnot? And just say, if you are going to pass something like that, then perhaps you should also include a ceasefire in Ukraine, as that, I think the average age of the soldier has went up to like 43, I hear, because they're getting so depleted in their citizenry. So we talk about, you know, lots of, you know, excess death. It has gone on for far too long there, and this also dials back to our, you know, economy here, with over $100 billion being sent there thus far. And, you know, it's not, it's all being shipped out, and then the bill is passed back to the taxpayers that, you know, hey, you'll pay that back later, but it's just being, you know, done out of the old printing press, just like any aid that'd be going to stuff with the Israel-Palestine conflict. So I'd say, if you're going to do a proclamation, include all, you know, all acts of funding war, because I think how they used to do it is they'd sell bonds, like to fund a war. That way, it'd be like, you know, just a gauge of the citizens and how they support it, you know? If people buy the bonds, then I guess they support the war effort. If they don't, then, you know, they don't support it. But now it's boiled back to, oh, we'll just print the money, send you the bill later. And that's pretty much where we get a lot of our homeless problem with the devaluation of the dollar. And I think, what is it, inflation's up to like around an estimated 20%? People are looking at it right now. It's just dialing back to the Federal Reserve, and we're run by globalist bankers. It's just a kind of doomed-to-failure setup with the fiat currency there. So anyways, that's all on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ash. I can't read that one from here.
Luna?
Thank you.
Hello, I would also like to speak in support of the proposed ceasefire resolution. Our tax dollars are currently going to fund the Israeli apartheid regime. The current ruling party finds its source in the Irgun terrorist militia, which was responsible for the Deir Yasin massacre during the expulsion of the Palestinians from their ancestral homeland in, I believe, 1947. This was one of the bloodiest massacres, resulting in over 100 deaths of Palestinians in a refugee camp. So this is the current ruling party. This is where their historical roots are from. As other members of, as other members of the public have stated, there are many better uses for these tax dollars. Obviously, there is a housing crisis, there's a lack of healthcare, there are plenty of uses for this money. Since October 7th, the Israeli military has committed many acts that would be considered war crimes, including the bombings of hospitals, including the Al Ali Baptist Hospital, killing over 500 people, patients and medical staff. They've bombed the Al Shifa Hospital. They recently bombed a children's hospital. There have been numerous cases, documented cases of the use of white phosphorus. These are all clear war crimes and violations of international law, not to mention, as other people have stated, there have been over 4,000 children killed since October 7th. This number is, which is, represents a campaign of, this is a month-long attack on Gaza. This total number of children exceeds the total yearly number of all children killed in any conflict zone for each year since 2019. This is an unprecedented and absurd attack on, that the inhumanity of this cannot be emphasized enough. And not to, and there's also many ways that this also impacts people in this country and in this community. And we've seen numerous hate crimes against Palestinians and Muslims since this has occurred, and since the Biden regime has openly stated its support-
Thank you, Luna. We appreciate you being here. Thanks. Lucy?
Lissy?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, yeah, I would also like to echo everything that I've heard up to this point from all the speakers, especially the last like three or four. I also am calling in opposition to all military conflicts that we are engaging in right now. Our eight-hundred-and-fifty-billion-dollar war budget is definitely a reason why, you know, that's like five thousand dollars per taxpayer to pay for all of these conflicts that I never got to vote on. I don't know anyone who got to decide on this, and we need, we need a rejection of the war on terror at this point. It's been my whole life, it's been twenty-plus years, and if we start at a local level and show that we do not support this, which I was at the Arcata City Council meeting, there was also a ton of people saying they do not support this, you know, this is what our tax dollars are buying, and it's gross, and we need to say something, and I really hope that, that, you know, that city council can, you know, it's really no skin off your back to say you don't support war at this point. Like, it's, it's, in every poll, a massive amount of the majority of people in this country do not support this, including Republicans, including Democrats across the board. So it's not politically dangerous to say you do not support war, and to call for a ceasefire in every conflict that we're engaging in, because eight-hundred-and-fifty-billion dollars is a lot of countries, it's like dozens of countries we're in right now. So, thank you for your time, and really hope that, don't have to keep coming to these and saying this. Thank you.
Thanks, Lissy. Is it Hannah?
Yes.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody, I'm Hannah, and I'm a Eureka resident, I'm from Eureka, and I'm so grateful to be able to live here and raise my family here, and I'm grateful for the direction the city is going in, and thank you all for your hard work. I'm commenting tonight on the proclamation on Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. It is getting to be the cold months again, and our neighbors living outside will be facing the elements. And I just want to say and echo what was said previously, that there are many ways to help out, there are so many wonderful organizations out there that need help, be it financial donation, or, you know, actual physical donations, your clothes or shoes, or your time, and just say that volunteering and opening your heart, opening your mind to our neighbors living outside goes a long way, not just for those on the receiving end, but also for those that serve. I myself, when I was a teenager at Eureka High, I had the opportunity to go serve down at Saint Vincent de Paul, and it opened my mind in so many different ways, to see that the people that are experiencing homelessness are good, wonderful people, and that the stigma is not representative of what people are actually going through. There are so many people that are in the shadows, that are living in their cars, young, old, from all different backgrounds, and many people from here, from our own backyard. So I just want to encourage anyone who's interested in volunteering to, to do so, and to find an organization whose mission connects with them, because there are, there's a lot of help needed, and many hands make light work. And, and also, if you do see someone that is experiencing homelessness, do not be afraid to say hello, to look them in the eye, and to, you know, really open your heart. So thank you all, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Hannah. Great reminder. So I wanted to, I forgot to report earlier, I apologize, but the public hearing that was scheduled for tonight will actually be continued until, what day was it, December? December first? Twenty, November twenty-first. So if you were here to speak on that item, please come back on the twenty-first. And with that, we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, there will be no separate discussion of these items. And I haven't heard of anything being pulled? No? Okay. So then can we get a motion? Oh, Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. A second. Thank you. Please vote, we have a motion in a second.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
So if we could just take like a five-minute bio break and come back at eight oh five? Does that work for you guys?
Seven oh five, it's because the clock is off.
Oh, it's only seven, no, then we don't, no bio break, I thought it was eight o'clock. Did you need a bio break? Okay. I apologize, I was looking at the clock and it says it's almost eight, and so I thought, thank you, Derek. Thank you, Derek. All right. Oh my goodness. There will be no, there will be no bio break in a moment. All right, so moving on to legislative action, legislative action correspondence. Anybody have any? Not right now. All right, so we'll turn it over to Project Coordinator West for a report on Operation Light Up Eureka. Thank you, Derek. We appreciate you.
Hello, everyone, I am Sarah West, I'm an economic development coordinator here at the city, and tonight I have the pleasure of presenting to you our lighting plan for Eureka. So I'm gonna go a little bit over what the lighting plan is, why we're talking about it, and then we'll go into a little bit of the context of why we chose the projects that we chose, and then we'll go over the projects themselves. So let's dive into the why and the what. The lighting plan is a component of the beautification plan that economic development, the economic development team has been working on, has not come forward to you yet, however, we're fast-tracking the lighting plan to strike where the iron is hot, because of a couple reasons. One, earlier this spring, you prioritized a lighting plan for Old Town in your visioning session, and then two, some of the past mayors have been talking about getting together and doing some fundraising for something, and they have discussed maybe doing some of the projects that we have been kicking around in the lighting plan. So we wanted to make sure that we had everything ready to go in case that funding became available. The plan itself is, at its heart, a project list that looks at what you would call decorative or maybe ambient lighting. There are a couple of pieces, like the lamp posts, that are a little bit more utilitarian, but the goal of the lighting plan is to enhance our commercial areas and really make, continue to build Eureka as a great place to live and to work and to play. So a little bit of context of our approach, you could name a hundred different projects that would all be fabulous for town, and our job was to narrow down what those might look like, so we really looked at like the infrastructure that was available, what was feasible in terms of costs, and then also what we really wanted to see, what were our hype, what were the, like, the really big projects that would make a difference. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about our opportunities constraints, and then some of our decisions. First of all, you have to have electricity in the public sphere in order to do these projects, which is a little bit tricky, so the projects that you see proposed primarily rely on accessing the public infrastructure, mostly in the form of the lamp posts. I'll get a little bit more into the details of the lamp posts later when we talk about specific projects. And then we also looked at some of the different city spaces that have electricity available, and then looked at some projects that will utilize the private sphere and connecting into buildings in order to like really build out a full experience of lighting in town. For funding, the approach is really investing staff time in facilitation of these projects, and then seeking funding other places. So we hope to partner with our community members, and then like I mentioned earlier, hopefully the mayors will help us fundraise as well. I wanna, while we're on this slide, I wanna point out the picture, this is actually an old photo of Eureka from Cal Poly Humboldt's digital archives, and you are looking at F Street, there's no date on it, but you can kinda guess based on the cars. You're looking at F Street, looking towards the Wado Front, I think we're standing on about Seventh Street, and you can see that there is this really neat intersection holiday decor lighting, and that was the inspiration for one of our projects that you'll see further in the list. So when we were deciding where to do projects, we really had a pedestrian focus, since that's where you're mostly experiencing this lighting, so we looked at where are people walking and shopping, what are the assets that we want to really highlight and get our biggest bang for our buck, and then also looking at public safety, how we can support that, and entice pedestrians to walk a little bit further, explore a little bit more, and of course promote nighttime activities and community engagement. All of these projects are worthy, and others as well, we had to really figure out how we wanted to tackle them, so we utilized a phased implementation to look at, our first phase is this year, we will be tackling the low-hanging fruit, some of the smaller projects that are easier to complete that tap into our existing infrastructure, and then the successive years we'll look at some of our bigger projects, and then we have a little bit of a light-to-do wishlist that we'd hope to complete in the future, but we will need to look at some big funding or some big infrastructure in order to complete them. So I'm gonna jump into the project list, I'm gonna go over them in a pretty high level. It's important to note that these projects are mostly goals of the things that we'd like to do, the details of how they will be executed, because they rely on a couple of different factors, would take a significant amount of staff time to investigate, so these projects basically initiate us investigating that and trying to accomplish the goal. Please, as I go through them, I can stop and talk about them in more detail, just let me know if you have questions, or we can go over it at the end. So I built in a Phase Zero just to sort of acknowledge what we already have in place in terms of lighting in our public sphere, and we have the cafe lights at Clark Plaza that were put in with the Fireman's Memorial in 2021, and then this year, staff added some cafe lights to the lamp posts around the Old Town Square, which if you're not familiar, that's where the gazebo is, and then added electricity to the gazebo itself so that we could do some more lighted decor. Phase one, we are kicking off this year, and then we'll probably bleed a little bit into next year, so the projects on this list are adding lighting to the 101 corridor between E and H Street, there are some city-owned blue lamp posts that already have electrical outlets that you'll hear about a couple of times because they're very easy, they're already there, so we're gonna tap into them and build on them. So 1.1 adds twinkle lights to the trees along the sidewalk on the corridor as you're driving on the lawn. 1.2 builds on the lighting that we already have in the Old Town Square around the gazebo by adding twinkle lights to the trees. 1.3 is very similar in adding twinkle lights to the trees in Clark Plaza. 1.4, the Romano-Gabriel Plaza, this is a really beautiful art asset that the city has, and going there at night, there's only a couple of lights, and it's used quite a bit during Friday Night Market and Arts Alive, and we wanted to be able to highlight a little bit more by adding some lights, stringing them around the art exhibit. 1.5, holiday lighting on Old Town light poles, this one is just tapping into the blue city light poles that are in Old Town and being able to add lighted garland to them. 1.6, holiday lighting on the 101 light poles, so as I mentioned in 1.1, there are outlets there, and the city already has some lighted holiday garlands that haven't been used in several, quite a few years, we have gussied them up and reinvigorated the color on them, and we'll be hanging them for the holiday season, and they will light up. And then 1.7, adding downlighting on the Simoa Bridge pillars, this is a Caltrans Clean California grant that we have to add lighting and highlight the murals that are on the pillars there. So that wraps up Phase one, and then Phase two was going to be the next three or four years. Before I move on, are there any questions? Okay.
Yeah, when we're looking at the string lighting that's being proposed, how do we, how do we handle that during inclement weather, particularly when it's windy?
So we will be attaching everything, it's gonna, it needs to withstand quite a bit of inclement weather, so when we're looking at string lighting, if you're asking about string lighting that's maybe strung between like lamp posts or trees, they'll be, they'll have a wire to support them, and they're zip-tied on, so they're very secure.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know, I just didn't wanna make sure something would blow away, and then it's like, well, we've lost the lighting there now, we'll wait until next time we do this program. So thank you for that thought.
Councilmember Maltin?
Thank you. I'm curious about the lighting fixtures themselves, if you have some that are several years old, I think I saw them, they're like faded to Eureka orange, but you made them red again. Well, so I'm assuming that those would be old-fashioned incandescents, little old-fashioned like fairy lights, but anything moving forward, do you have a commitment to use more efficient LED technology?
Yes, in the plan it does lay out that we are primarily using warm white light LEDs.
Don't let me stop you.
We just already have these, it's a great use of what we already have. Okay. Phase two, this builds a little bit more into downtown and Old Town. 2.1, the F Street Art Corridor, in the strategic art plan that we already have, the F Street is identified as the art corridor for town, so we would like to build on that identity using a light color story. We'll use a public process, pick a color, and use lights all along the, on F Street to enhance the art corridor and make it more easily identifiable. 2.2, this is adding twinkle lights to street trees, so we'd really like to see twinkle lights in street trees all over town, however, the infrastructure isn't necessarily there for the city to be able to tap into it ourselves. So this program, it will facilitate working with private property owners and electricity on the outside of their buildings, and enabling them to wrap the lights in front of their property, in front of their stores with twinkle lights. 2.3, intersection holiday lighting, that was the picture that you saw earlier, the historic picture, where we would like to add a lighted holiday display above a street intersection. 2.4 is pretty self-explanatory, having a wow holiday display that would enable us to have some sort of lighting ceremony, a really big beacon of town that says that the holiday season is here and this is our big piece. 2.5, holiday lighting at Sequoia Park, the zoo and the park are both looking at adding holiday lighting to the property during, during the season, they're exploring adding lights to the Skywalk and potentially maybe making a Christmas tree out of a redwood tree, and then they're also, they are also exploring some other ideas. 2.6, adding pedestrian-level lighting to commercial buildings, this is a partner project with other local business organizations to promote adding exterior lighting at the pedestrian level to commercial buildings and businesses to continue to build out the lighting on our sidewalks in our Old Town and Downtown and Henderson Center. 2.7, restore PG&E lamp posts in Old Town. So the blue lamp posts that we have in Old Town are owned and operated by the city, however, the majority of the lamp posts in Old Town and Downtown are owned by PG&E, we pay the power bill, they own the infrastructure, they could use some love. So this project looks at coordinating with them and identifying what needs to be fixed and working with them to restore the lamp posts so that our existing lamp posts can provide more light. 2.8, exterior downlighting on city buildings, the primary project for this one will be exploring putting down lighting on City Hall so that you can see it at night, maybe potentially having colored lighting and doing a little bit of placemaking so everybody knows where City Hall is. doing a little bit of placemaking so everybody knows where City Hall is. And then I'm about to move on to phase three, but before I do, are there any questions on phase two?
So we're going to work with PG&E to fix up the lamp posts they have let fall into disrepair. I'm assuming at, at least partially the city's expense. And then who owns them after that?
I, that is all to be determined. I don't anticipate that we will necessarily be taking on ownership of the lamp posts. The first step that we have identified is to inventory everything that needs to be fixed and coordinating with them to work on fixing them.
Cause if we're paying to fix their infrastructure, we should get some kind of credit or something.
We, we will not be paying to fix their infrastructure. We'll make requests and if there's something above and beyond that, that they're responsible for, we may, but we have no intention on paying.
Same, same vein of thought there with PG&E and I think I have an idea of why, but what's taken it to the point that they've let them fall into disrepair for as long as they have? Is it as simple, is it as simple as saying, can you fix these and we just haven't done that yet?
Well, PG&E is really backed up with a lot of different projects right now, so even getting to that point, I know this has happened over a very long period of time, but we're hoping to get some momentum from them to try and address these issues. It's a safety issue. Some of the poles are being tapped into by folks and there's hazards associated with that. And so we're hoping to get them in quicker than later.
And I know it's still part of the second phase, but if PG&E is just like, yeah, we'll get to that after we're done burying every cable in California.
No, that's not going to be, at some point in time, we may be able to do it and then build them, but we'd have to have that conversation with them. It's their responsibility to maintain that infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and phase three, ideas for the future and lighting other parts of Eureka. 3.1, Matikit Plaza and Boardwalk Lights. This would be adding cafe light to the Matikit Plaza and potentially adding lights along the boardwalk. 3.2, Carson Mansion. As we all know, it's one of the crown jewels of town. So we would like to add lighting along the boulevard leading up to it to enhance the experience of it. There's just not a lot of infrastructure over there currently to enable that, which is why it's in phase three. 3.3, Henderson Center Lamp Post Lighting. This would really open up the game for lighting in Henderson Center. There's not currently a lot of access points for the city for adding lighting projects over there. So adding outlets to PG&E lamp posts would enable us to do more projects in that area. 3.4, twinkle lights in trees and city parking lots. This project just builds on the projects in the previous two phases and adding twinkle lights to trees in town. Particularly when I think of this project, I think of the trees in the E Street parking lot behind Loes Bagels. They could really use some twinkle lights. 3.5, alley activation lighting. We'd love to continue activating the alleys in Old Town and Downtown and add some more lighting to make them more pedestrian funnily. And 3.6, add electrical outlets to all PG&E Old Town and Downtown lamp posts. As we've talked about before, working with PG&E is going to be a little bit of a conversation, but it was worth writing down that we would love electrical outlets on all of the lamp posts and so we put it in the plan and are hopeful. And with that, we can talk about more questions or I have a suggested motion for you when you're ready.
Sure. I know, you know, some of the need is raising funds. Can you tell me a little bit more about the budget we currently have available for this and, and sort of the anticipated amount we might need to raise, save, et cetera, allocate in future years?
So right now, the way we have the plan set up is that it's primarily staff time being spent on this, not necessarily a lot in the way of city funds. There may be a couple of like strands of light string, excuse me, some strings of lights or the fixing of some of our own outlets that will potentially come out of economic development's budget, but they wouldn't be consequential amounts. In terms of fundraising, the projects that you see, we would like to have private partnerships, like potentially like the mayor's initiative that help fundraise for some of the bigger pieces. That's why we put them in phase two, to give us time to fundraise and get there with some of the more expensive items.
My name's Eileen Barchd. I am a retired former PG&E employee for 37 plus years and I loved my job in helping people. PG&E takes safe, public safety unless they've changed a whole lot in 10 years extremely seriously and I I'm almost offended that you feel that PG&E feels that there's a safety issue with those lights and they're doing nothing about it. That's, I, I just think that's not accurate. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Do you see anybody on Zoom? Althea?
Yeah, so I'm very supportive of more lighting downtown and throughout the city, kind of however we can get it. I would like to see more focus on the down lighting, you know, like on buildings and you know, pedestrian, pedestrian scale lighting. I would love to see this as a residential thing at some point. I mean, on Halloween, I had a couple of kids crossing the street to my house in the pitch black, wearing pitch black costumes. Lucky for them, I had LED flashlights to give away. But you know, our streets are very dark. When you guys see twinkle lights, I'm not sure if you mean like Christmas lights that are actually like flashing. But I would suggest having it be not a flashing light, but a solid, you know, continuously, continuously lit setting rather than a flashing setting. Just because it provides more consistent light and your bulbs don't burn out so fast. But that's all on this. I'm glad to see it happening.
Thank you, Althea.
Heather?
Hello. So in regards to lighting, I do like the idea of lighting up and paving the way. There are still many people that like to go for walks in safely well-lit areas in Eureka and I was one of them with my dog. And then also please consider the ecosystem because there are studies that the blue lighting affects animals' nocturnal system. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing none.
Saying no, and we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano.
Thanks for, for the report. One thing I would like to see and it may be implied already, but I hear from a lot of business owners that who are outside of the Friday Night Market, Eureka Main Street kind of bollarded off area that they feel like there, there's, you know, maybe some visual cues that indicate that people shouldn't go past, you know, the, the bollarded areas. So I'm thinking that it would be great to see us use lighting to help encourage people to travel, you know, beyond the, beyond the bollards for things like Arts Alive and, you know, make it down to C Street. You know, so I would love to see that just be part of the plan is how can we expand the, the visual indicators of kind of safe pedestrian areas around the Old Town Downtown area, maybe even all the way to the, the boardwalk and things like that, being mindful of light impacts on fish and things like that too.
Councilmember Maltin?
Speaking of light impacts, to the, the question of the impact on wildlife, I know that when we updated the sign piece of zoning, we talked about dark skies initiative. And I'd like to see that play into this when we're talking about those bigger scale lights, the, the building lighting lights and down lighting, great, up lighting within the sky, not so great. So just keeping those recommendations of the dark sky initiative in mind when you start planning those bigger projects.
Absolutely.
So comments, questions? No questions, comments and a motion perhaps? Anybody? Councilmember Maltin?
I'll move to approve the Operation Light Up Eureka program.
Second.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you, Sarah. I mean, project coordinator West. All right. And now we will move to the elections code, 9212, Report on Citizens Initiative Amending the City's General Plan for 21 City-Owned Parking Lots and the Jacobs Middle School Site. Development Services Director Kenyon.
Hi. Good evening, mayor and council. Let me just pull up, I have a short presentation explaining, summarizing the initiative and then I'm going to pass it off to the consultant we hired to do the economic analysis to introduce himself. He's on Zoom. So pursuant to the elections code, the city council requested city staff prepare a report on the impacts and effects of the citizens initiative to amend the city's general plan for 21 city-owned parking lots and the Jacobs Middle School site. So to summarize, it's imposing restrictions on 21 city-owned parking lot parcels, removing city, six city-owned parking lot parcels from the housing elements, affordable housing program and site inventory, and expanding allowed uses on the Jacobs School site and reserving 40% of the site for high-density residential development. Here are the 21 implicated parking lot parcels that are all city-owned. So the initiative would allow, the only uses that would be allowed under the initiative on these parcels would be public parking. High-density residential would also be allowed, provided that each site retains at least the same number of public parking spaces that exist now in addition to any parking spaces required by the occupants of the residential development. Bicycle parking would also be allowed at 5% of the number of vehicular parking spaces available. And then two of the 21 parking lots identified by the initiative are the parking lots awarded through a city RFP process to the Weot tribe for the development of affordable housing. Those are the ones circled in red dotted lines. The initiative states that all uses contemplated under the RFP would be allowed on those two parking lots, provided that the Weot tribe remain the bid awardee and developer of the two lots. Six of the 21 parking lots are currently planned for affordable housing development in the city's housing element, highlighted in pink here. These include the two Weot tribe sites at Fifth and D and Sixth and L. Two of the three sites awarded to Link Housing at Eighth and G and Sixth and M. And the two parcel lot on Third Street between G and H where the city is working with Humboldt Transit Authority to develop a transit housing hub. The city has no current plans for the other 15 parking lots that are implicated by the initiative. The 21 lots are located in the city's core area, which includes downtown, Old Town and the library district. These are mixed-use areas where a broad array of uses are allowed, both residential and commercial. For instance, the lot at First and E used to be a hotel and the lot at Third and G was our old city hall. So the initiative would only allow parking in high-density residential in conjunction with public parking on all 21 of these parcels. So that would decrease what types of uses are allowed there. You wouldn't be able to have any mixed-use development in the future. These restrictions could only be lifted through another ballot initiative. The white dotted line on this map is the inland coastal zone boundary. 12 of the implicated parcels are located in the coastal zone. For these 12 lots, the necessary changes to the coastal zoning code to implement the initiative would have to be certified by the California Coastal Commission. So state housing law requires that every city and county in California accommodate a share of their region's projected housing needs called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation or RENA. And the current housing element cycle, which started in 2019 and runs to the end of 2027, the city of Eureka was allocated arena of 952 dwelling units. So that means we have a goal of constructing 952 new dwelling units by 2028. The goal is divided into income levels as shown here and just to give context, a unit is considered affordable if housing costs are less than 30% of the family's monthly income. So for the purposes of defining affordable housing in 2023 in Humboldt County, an income of $41,250 for a family of four is considered the upper threshold for very low income. At this income, spending $1,031 a month on housing, so both rent and utilities is considered affordable. An income of $65,950 for a family of four is the upper threshold for being considered low income. At this income, spending $1,649 per month on housing is considered affordable. To put these numbers in context, the parking lots implicated by the initiative are in Census Traxx 1 and 5, which based on the most recent American Community Survey data have household median incomes of about $32,000 and $38,800 respectively. So pursuant to state law, the city's housing element must include an inventory of land suitable and available for residential development to meet the city's RENA for each income level. Our current housing element includes Implementation Program H34, which puts 14 city-owned parcels up for sale or lease for affordable housing. The city's housing element relies on this program for its entire very low-income RENA and a portion of its low-income RENA. So six of the, six of the parcels in implementation measure, in this implementation measure implicated by the initiative and the four parcels at Sunset Heights and the three waterfront parcels and the Link Housing site at Sunny and Weirville aren't. So in addition to imposing restrictions on the 21 parking lots, the initiative would amend the housing element to remove, oh, I had a map showing that. Those are the ones that are implicated by the initiative. The initiative would remove the six parking lot sites from our housing element site inventory. And so by deleting those six sites from the residential site inventory, the city would no longer be demonstrating adequate available land for its very low-income RENA with a deficit of 66 units. The amendment to the housing element must be approved by the State Department of Housing and Community Development as being in compliance with the state housing element laws. And HCD won't approve a housing element unless the housing element demonstrates adequate site for the city's RENA for each income category. The last thing the initiative does is it would add a policy to the housing element, expanding the uses allowed at the former Jacobs Middle School site. The site is currently zoned public facilities. Under the initiative, at least 40% of the total ground area of the site, which is about 5.6 acres, must be zoned to only allow high-density residential uses. And then on the remaining 60% of the site, which is about eight and a half acres, public facility uses would still be allowed as well as all the uses that are principally permitted in the neighborhood, commercial and downtown zoning districts, which is a diverse array of commercial sale and service, professional office, civic, recreational and artisan manufacturing and other uses. Also, low, medium and high-density housing would be allowed. And just, it's important to point out that unlike the parking lot parcels, the Jacobs site is owned by this Eureka unified, city-unified school district and not the city of Eureka. The school district is currently in The school district is currently in negotiations with the California Highway Patrol for their purchase and use of the site for their headquarters. And the Highway Patrol is a state agency and is therefore not subject to city zoning. So the CHP would not be restricted by the initiative. It would not have to reserve 40% of the site for high-density housing if they were to acquire it. Okay, and now I'm going to pass it off to our consultant, Proforma. It's Lance Harris, if you're on, if you could unmute yourself.
Yes. Hello, I am Lance Harris. I'm a partner at Proforma Advisors, and we are a land use economic consulting firm that specializes in market analysis, financial feasibility, and impact studies. We were hired by the city to analyze the initiative's potential impacts on future development, specifically how the initiative impacts development feasibility, retail sales, which would be the fiscal impact, and job creation or the economic impact on the six lots, which Kristin spoke about that were identified in the 2040 General Plans Housing Element and previously awarded for affordable housing development. Per the city's direction, we examined three hypothetical development scenarios. These scenarios included a no-development scenario, an affordable housing-only development scenario, and a mixed-use affordable housing development scenario. What we found was that because of the initiative's parking requirements, new affordable housing would not be feasible. And as a result, the most immediate impact would be the loss of approximately $170 million in economic output, over $63 million in employment-related earnings, and 1,000 jobs associated with the affordable housing construction on those sites. These impacts would be a one-time impact during the development period. Additionally, new residents in those housing developments are expected to spend $7 million in retail sales annually, which would also be lost. The prototypical developments impacts were also applied to all 21 city-owned lots identified in the initiative to provide an order of magnitude estimate of its potential total impact on future development. Extrapolated to all the sites, the total impact of the potential loss of the construction would equate to approximately 3,300 jobs with earnings of over $212 million or $64,000 per job, and a loss of over $24 million in retail sales. However, it's probably important to note that there, as Kristin mentioned, no, you know, current plans for development, and if the development were to occur, the impacts would likely be greater if the development were modeled not as affordable housing. Also, as I referred to before, there was the no-development scenario, which had no impact. So essentially, this would be the baseline conditions currently in the city. And the mixed-use development was ultimately not reported because the additional impacts would be marginal compared to what we examined in the affordable housing residential-only scenario. And then finally, we also reviewed the 2022 parking study, parking data provided by the city and foot traffic data provided by Placer AI to determine if the loss of parking would adversely impact local businesses. Reviewing recent trends since the 2022 parking studies show that parking demand has decreased or remains stable since its post-COVID recovery, and is well below the reported 85% utilization rate, which is the healthy balance between parking supply and demand. And so it was determined there'd be no impact on the downtown businesses with the potential loss of parking to construct the planned affordable housing units. And with that, I'll conclude my brief summary and introduction of our findings.
Thank you. So, are there any questions?
Mayor, if you, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to clarify for the council. Based on the agenda, it suggests that we may be looking for a direction from staff, direction to staff this evening. And from a procedural standpoint, this is a report only tonight. Council has already taken action on the initiative, and unless council wants to reconsider that action, no further action is called for tonight or required. So this is report only tonight.
But because it's a report, we still have public comment, is that, yes?
Yes, Mayor, it is traditional for us to take public comment on, on reports.
Thank you, Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you, and thank you for the detailed report. This is a question, I believe, for the consultant Lance Harris. And it's just a question related to the the anticipated spending of potential new residents of $7 million. I'm just curious to understand how those calculations were made.
Sure, am I still, sorry, checking to see that I'm unmuted. The, the specific calculations are, can actually be found towards the end of the report. And what was used is a estimated average income for the hypothetical development for the affordable housing residents. And essentially, that, that number was then adjusted based on the most recent countywide retail spending, and then applied to the development, and then further applied to those sites. So again, the specific calculation is on page 23 of the report, but it's based on the average income that's anticipated for the, again, hypothetical affordable housing unit development.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few different questions that may vacillate between staff and the consultant, thank you, I was going to say contractor, but I'm like, that's not the right term either. And, and so this one would go directly to staff. What occurs? What are the mechanisms that, that take effect if we're deficient in any of our income categories for arena numbers?
So there's the, what gets built on the ground, and then there's what our housing element says. And so our housing element needs to demonstrate, in it, has to identify actual specific sites in the city and assign a certain number of new units to those sites at certain income levels. So if our housing element no longer does that, then, and we take it to, we have to take, you know, any amendments we make to it to HCD to, for, for certification, for approval, they'll find that it's out of compliance with state housing law. So regardless of what's getting built on the ground, if we don't show in the housing element that we have sites available for our lower-income arena, we're out of compliance with state housing law, and then we're no longer eligible for a bunch of grants that we rely on, and it talks about that in the report. We're also vulnerable to fines and lawsuits from the state that Autumn could talk about more. And there's a provision of state law, if somebody is proposing a qualified project, and it, for housing, they won't have to comply with our general plan or zoning. It's called the builder's remedy.
And then, thank you, thank you for that. You had hit on the the item there about the, the property of Eureka City Schools, the old Jacobs site. And so does the initiative require any transfer of that property to the city? Or does it just change the zoning limitations, requirements around it?
Yeah, it amends the housing element to add a policy that way, that tells us we need to allow a bunch of uses by right and reserve 40% for affordable housing. It tells us to update our zoning code to implement that. So it's just changing zoning. It's not requiring any sort of ownership change.
Wouldn't transfer to us, it would still say in Eureka City Schools' hands, and they would have the final determination what they would want to do with that property?
Correct.
Okay. This, I think, might go to the consultant. Are there, are there any considerations for the potential loss of revenue from reduced parking spaces in the areas of Old Town and Downtown?
Yeah, so that was the bit I, I sort of ended on, is that we did look at the reduction of parking, and then if that would, again, hit the threshold of, you know, reducing parking to then impact businesses, and because at this point, the utilization is, 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 is low, there's sufficient room to take away parking essentially without impacting businesses.
Okay. And then, these are my final sets of questions, and I think these go back to staff. Of the 21 lots that we have, 15 remain for public parking currently. And so how many spots would that be available? Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I know you have the numbers, we've asked you so many times.
We don't have, do you have? She could try and look it up. I could tell you this is, there's been numbers reported in the public that are far greater than what will be lost. I can tell you that third of G and H are about, are 72, anywhere between 72 and 70.
I have it here.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, so the six Housing Element sites, there's 218 parking spaces there. And just a reminder, one of those, one of the Weot Tribe sites is our city parking lot, that's not available for public parking. It's for city hall parking. And then the other 15 lots, there's 470 parking spaces in those other 15 lots.
400 and?
470 parking spaces.
Okay, so 470, almost 500. And so of those 15 remaining, 12 are in Old Town. And so do we have a count for how many of the spaces would be left in Old Town? Or could we just infer that it would be over 200?
Yeah, I don't have that count.
Okay, yeah, yeah. That was just something I thought of as we were getting the report tonight. That's, that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I have a question for the consultant. When you were saying that the lots are underutilized, was that using the 2020 data, 2021 data that the city provided?
Well, I mean, it was, it was a combination. I mean, I, I need to point out that I'm, I'm not a, a parking expert. You know, the, the focus was on the economic impact, but given the detail of the parking study, we used that as the first basis, and then the city provided additional information on the utilization of the parking lots as a double check to see if anything had materially changed from their findings. And then as a third check, we used a company, a private company that has foot trafficking data called Placer AI to track the amount of foot traffic in the different areas within the downtown, which is not directly related to parking, but it showed the same general trends of either a stabilization or decline from the, obviously, the, the great dip in 2020, and then up to 2021 and 22 being stabilized. So, you know, from that information, there was nothing that appeared to suggest that the findings from the parking study have changed since its release, I guess, in 2022, if I have the data right.
And I'll just add to that, when, when Lance is referring to the parking study, that is a combination of an evaluation of data from multiple parking surveys that I believe the years were 2016, 2019, 2021, and then we even gave them data of our most recent surveys as well. So it's, as been reported in the public incorrectly, that parking study looked at data over multiple years, and 2019 being one of our highest years of TOT returns, and that was used as part of the study. So I think it was 16, 19, and, and 21?
16, 17, 19, and 21.
Yes, there's four years that were used as part of that data.
But yeah, on page seven of the, of Proforma's report, you can see a graph showing our different parking counts of the parking lots from 2011 through 2023. So we, we have data from this year showing that parking numbers are still down.
I, so I, I know I haven't checked on this for a couple of months, but I didn't think that we had data from 2023 on all the lots. I thought we were still waiting on that.
So, no, we, we did third G and H at the beginning of the year, and then we had some lower staffing. And then prior to losing some more staff, we found out that it was done, and we did have that study. That was the one that was forwarded to the chamber, and so I did forward all that information to the chamber.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moulton?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, you, had a few clarifying questions. When you talk about the housing that still could be developed on the existing parking lots, being restricted to high-density residential and parking, and that means no mixed use, right? So then, my understanding is right now our strategy is to have things like retail on, and customer serving on the ground floor, and people living above to encourage, you know, people to go around, and thus would just supersede that altogether?
For these 21 lots, yes. You couldn't have a corner market, or a daycare, or a transit station, just housing and parking.
But if you're taking, so then if they take away, okay, so one of these lots is developed, and in order to do that, they have to maintain the existing level of parking and add parking for whatever the development includes. So logistically, how many stories of parking would that have to be now in a low-income, in a, in an apartment building?
Yeah, so I looked at the size of the lots and how many parking spaces there are in them, and then divided it and averaged it, and it's about 350 square feet per parking space. So we're looking at, it's, it's more parking than, it's probably the same amount of, or more parking space taken up as a unit, you know what I mean? So I would, you know, it's a, it basically, the parking takes up the whole lot now, so you would need at least a floor of parking for the public parking, and then additional floor.
And then more on top of that. So we're looking at buildings with no commercial on the ground floor, nothing customer serving, and potentially two stories of parking, or at least one story, maybe two stories on the bottom of all of these buildings, if we could get somebody to build them like that.
Right.
Okay. Separate from that, going over to the Jacobs campus, what's the new zoning designation specifically that would be overlaid on it?
We'd have to figure that out to implement what they're asking for. So they're asking, they're adding a policy to the housing element, calling for us to allow a bunch of uses by right. So we would have to figure out how to amend our zoning code to do that.
So right now, does it look like it could be a shopping center or just any, I mean, sorry, I won't ask for instance, never mind. If you, that's not clarified yet. As the representative of the second ward, I'm curious what would then be allowed, you know, a block from my house?
Yeah, there's a list in the, the staff report of all of the uses that would be allowed. It's on, oh man, we didn't put page numbers on the staff report.
There are page numbers in the agenda. Unfortunately, I don't have access to my computer right now. Technical difficulties, but.
It's towards the end. But yeah, it's, you know, low, medium, high-density residential, and then a bunch of different commercial, service, and office uses, bars, artisan manufacturing, general retail, restaurants, vehicle sales, colleges, government facilities, civic institutions, offices.
That's quite a list. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry, one more question. Has the, you know, I know we've been working diligently with the state Department of Housing and Community Development on a pro-housing designation. Has HCD given any indicator of, you know, how this might affect the pro-housing designation and/or just our standing with the state? Have they given any response related to this?
I asked that because one of the criteria for getting, for being eligible for pro-housing is having a compliant housing element, but I haven't gotten a response on this specific question yet.
No questions? Okay, so with that, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Come on up. Hi, Mr. Wheeler.
Hi.
Welcome. Welcome.
Um, thank you for producing the report. It was extremely informative and illuminating. Uh, it shows what a bad idea this anti-housing initiative truly is. It's bad for Eureka, and it makes sense that it's bad for Eureka because it's not from Eureka. It was written by a San Diego attorney. It's being sold to us by a Tennessee PR firm, and it's being paid for by someone who lives primarily in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Uh, so this is not a Eureka solution to Eureka problem, and housing affordability is a massive problem in our city. Uh, I wanted to make sure that council saw that we are in high country news. An article written by former lumberjack and North Coast Journal reporter, uh, Ollie Hancock, called "Greenwash to Efforts to Block Affordable Housing." And there's a really interesting part of this article. Uh, it talks about the lawsuits filed by citizens for better Eureka, which all overlaps pretty significantly with the anti-affordable housing proponents. So the group's website warns that reduced parking would force people to walk further, putting them at risk of what it calls, quote, "A rising number of attacks on pedestrians." That sounds really scary, right? Uh, in a September call, however, Casey Self, a spokesperson for the group, said she was unaware of any data showing an increase in such attacks. Self works for a Tennessee-based PR firm whose clients include Citizens for Better Eureka, the Eureka Housing For All Initiative, and one of Arkley's security national companies. We've heard, uh, city staff also explain that other lies have been told to try to sell this to the general public. Uh, they're calling themselves the Eureka Housing For All Initiative. Really, this is going to block housing. They've said that it's going to cost us 600 parking spots. Really, we find out the number is only slightly over 200. Uh, it's going to cause us to have a non-compliant housing element. That's going to result in us, uh, losing our own zoning code ability to regulate local land use decisions. This is a supremely dumb decision, and I know that there are proponents of this here tonight. I asked them to remove this initiative, to take it off. Let's work together to find solutions for Eureka. Let's not force things through lawsuits and through initiatives written by highly paid San Diego attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you. So remember, friends, thank you so much. I appreciate your willingness to do that. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is James Clor. I'm a homeowner in Eureka. Uh, I just wanted to thank staff for hiring a third-party independent agency to do the pro forma reports on this. Uh, I think it's probably going to be said that it's a biased report, but I would ask the public to, to think, would pro forma advisors LLC, who serves thousands of organizations across the country, produce a biased report? No. Their job is to be hired to produce an unbiased report that gives us the information that we need for this. So when they say it's going to cost the city $7 million, that's not the city feeding them information so that they can say that. That is them deducing it on their own from the best data that they have. I also want to point out, I think it's interesting that the proponents of this initiative say, "We don't stop housing from being built. You can still build housing there." But for, say, the Link Housing Project that we have designed already and that is trying to get funding, and I think has secured $30 million of funds, they would have to go back to the drawing board and not only re-engineer the building entirely from probably a primarily wood-framed building to at least two stories of concrete parking on the, on the first, on the two floors, and then housing above that. And I think you would destroy your housing numbers there again as well, because we're talking about a four or five-story building that's full of house, housing, to a five-story building that only has three stories of housing. Uh, I just think it doesn't make sense what they're putting forward. It doesn't provide housing for all. Uh, it doesn't improve downtown vitality. It actually hurts downtown more than it's going to help. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Gordon Cloutworthy. I'm, uh, one of the candidates for the, uh, First District Supervisor position. I'm running against, uh, basically everybody that's trying to shut down this housing. Housing is one of the most important things in all of Humboldt County, in all of California. We have so many disabled veterans and, you know, it's, uh, Veterans Day coming up. Uh, veterans need housing. Uh, uh, one of the things that they need, uh, to get treatment for any kind of mental illness is a address. Uh, and these, uh, low-income housing projects will actually provide housing for those veterans that need that. Uh, anything that the city can do to keep this housing project going, um, it's desperately needed. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Hi. Come on up. You've been waiting a long time.
Hi. Hello, City Council and hello, Mayor.
Hi.
Hi, um, thank you very much. My name's Michelle Norton, and yes, I am a Eureka resident and a small business vendor, which clearly puts me smack dab into the middle of the community. I am hands-on. I'm a single mother who has experienced living in affordable housing projects with a child. The struggle is very real. It's constant to keep your child out of harm's way and to keep them from getting involved in the dark side of the city, of the underworld, such as ditching school, sexual trafficking, and even lured into the drug world. It's heart-wrenching to listen to our cries, leaving us feel, leaving us feel powerless and weak as though our words have no value. As a resident, how do I encourage the young to grow colorful and strong while some of the city peers step aside during their struggles, look the other way as though it's not their problem or their concern? Affordable housing, yes, but do your homework. I highly suggest to go down to DM Fifth and watch what's happening on the, on a full day out there. Watch the drug dealers fill the pockets of the beggars, twist their minds to the no-man's land, and all the while, your child is watching. DM Fifth is the dark side of Eureka along with several other hotspots. However, this location is a business district with no safe surroundings for our young or our old. There is no safe place to play outdoors, no nearby neighbors to make friends, nowhere to keep them away from the underworld, which thrive to draw these kids in. Building an affordable housing is a must, but building a project in a business district just to get funding, your actions are louder than words. The dis, the DM Fifth Street project should be examined a little deeper. As our peers and leaders, would you allow your children to hang out in a drug-infested area and keep telling them, "Oh, it's safe"? I believe you wouldn't, absolutely not. Then why would we let any child be raised there? Why is my child or any child allowed and encouraged to be subjected to the underworld of Eureka? Is it okay? Is it okay because it's not your kid? Yes, I'm trying to make a strong statement here. Yes, the city needs more housing. Yes, we need affordable housing, but we need to look at what we are creating by rushing into this funding. At what cost? The cost of our kids. We need to protect all of Eureka's children. Let's create a safer place. Sorry, I'm stumbling right now. Let's create a, let's create a safer place for Eureka's children to thrive, lower our mental health crisis, and give children half a chance here. Create a safe and clean future, creating a healthier and safe life in Eureka for all, including the poor. Want a stronger community? Then bond with the community, diminish the divide, and unite as one, creating Eureka and one of California's best city destinations. That should be our ultimate goal. It's not just getting the funds funneled into the city, but we need to create a safe city.
Thank you, Michelle. Your three minutes are up. Thanks for being here. Hello, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, City Council members. Mayor Bragel. My name is Mike Munson, and I'm a Eureka resident, a downtown business owner, and I'm also the co-signer of the Eureka Housing For All and Downtown Vitality Initiative. I've read the report the city staff has prepared for you, and I have concerns about the information it contains and also the information it does not contain. The report states that there will be a loss of millions of dollars of one-time construction expenditures and millions of dollars each year in retail spending if the initiative passes. This is false and very misleading. The initiative would not prevent the construction of affordable housing on city-owned lots. It would not prevent people from spending money downtown on retail businesses. The analysis completely fails to take into account the economic impacts that would result from the initiative, uh, if the initiative were not adopted and the city redevelopment, uh, of the downtown parking lots without preserving some parking. This would be, result in significant job losses and the losses in retail spending. This is what we, as business owners, are most concerned about, and it wasn't even considered in the report. It appears neither the city nor the PFA understands the difference between fiscal impacts or economic impacts, and neither the city report nor the PFA report distinguishes between the two. In fact, both the city and the PFA use the, uh, terms interchangeably when describing purely economic impacts. Fiscal impacts are not the same as economic impacts, and economic impacts, uh, measure things like jobs, salaries, and economic output. Fiscal impacts, on the other hand, measure additional revenues or costs that may be incurred by the public entities or, uh, in relation to the economic impacts. One thing that is in the report is a statement that the general plan policies acknowledge how abundant, uh, abundant free parking incentivizes people to buy cars rather than walk or bike, and how making parking more difficult promotes behavioral change. Nowhere does the general plan specifically promote this behavioral change. This is just a personal philosophy of a few people in the city and a few vocal advocates. It is also grossly unrealistic. No matter how hard it is to park in the city, someone who lives in McKinleville, for example, who needs to be here for a doctor's appointment or go to the bank or eat at a restaurant, will never be able to bike or walk here instead of driving. Taking a few parking, taking away, uh, parking spots is going to encourage people to, uh, is not going to encourage our people not to drive cars. This is not how human behavior changes occur. You can't do it by restricting or eliminating. Behavioral changes won't get people to ride their bikes or take public transportation. It will get them to drive their cars to one of my competitors who provide them with parking and will get them to spend their money outside the city. I encourage you all to read the Initiative Impact Report, which can be found at eurekahousingforall2024.org. Last time I was here, the council was adamant that the voters be educate, uh, educate themselves on the details of this initiative, and we couldn't agree more. We created this report so the council members, city staff, and voters can do exactly that. I encourage you to take the time to read both reports. It took us 36 pages to outline the details of all the false and misleading statements in the PFA's 27-page report. I did, however, find it particularly, uh, interesting that the report showed a full parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munson. Welcome. Welcome back.
Farmer Councilmember Brady. Is this thing on? Yeah, there. Good evening, Council and Mayor and Staff. Hey, um, I just want to thank you, uh, Leslie, for, you know, making a case like Tom Wheeler did, saying the anti-housing initiative, you, you just always call it that, and that isn't what it's called. It's not an anti-housing initiative. So I just want to thank you for that, you know, it's just like really, really right there. Did anybody read the disclaimer during your meeting? What, because I came in a little late? Do you know? Anybody read the disclaimer? Okay, and the disclaimer says, and I want it on the record, "Although we believe that the expectations in these reports are reasonable, any or all of the estimates or projections in this report may prove to be incorrect. To the extent possible, we have attempted to verify and confirm estimates and assumptions used in this analysis. However, some assumptions inevitably will not materialize as a result of inaccurate assumptions or as a consequence of known or unknown risks and uncertainties and unanticipated events and circumstances which may occur. Consequently, actual results achieved during this period, during the period covered by our analysis will vary from our estimates, and the variations may be material. As such, pro forma advisors accepts no liability in relation to the estimates provided herein." I just wanted that out to the public so that they know that this report is deniable, totally deniable. And I read, you know, as a council member, I read all my agendas, and I doubt that you have read any of this completely. So, for example, I was proof, growing through it, and I saw that, um, the study said that they used for their report said that the area that was covered was from A to L and from First to Seventh. And that's not true, because they've included the parking lot at Eighth. So if you stop at Seventh, you're leaving out one entire parking lot of construction. So, right there, you know, like, if you can't trust, if, you know, if they're using data that's flawed and assumptions that are flawed, you know, where do you go from there? How do, how do you trust these people? That they're using data that isn't verifiable? So I would love to see you guys block off four parking lots, five parking lots, completely block them off for about two weeks, three weeks maybe, from November to December, sometimes in there, just to see what happens, because it might sober you guys up and make you realize that this is a bad idea and it is not an anti-housing. It is, it is a pro-business, pro-parking initiative. And it doesn't, it's, you know, they say it's not cost-effective, but it's probably not true. So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Well, thanks for being here, Marion. It's always nice to see you. Uh, anyone else from the audience? Okay. Hi.
Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Grayson, um, and I just wanted to say that I think affordable housing is a incredibly important, um, thing to be building in the city, and you really should be emphasizing that there is a lot of parking in this city, uh, just from walking around, being here. I've seen a lot of parking lots. There is not very much affordable housing. I can certainly tell you that as a renter myself. Um, and I think that encouraging affordable housing is the thing that should be done over encouraging, um, continuing to keep the parking lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the audience, we'll bring it over to Zoom. Althea.
All right. Um, so I do want to, as an frequent pedestrian and transit user, um, I want to emphasize that there has not been a quote-unquote increased, you know, attacks on pedestrians in Eureka. That simply is not happening. Whoever said that was flat-out lying. I know, because I walk Old Town and Downtown Eureka every day. I'm a small female. It's not happening. Somebody made that up. Um, I do want to say in response to the idea that, you know, somebody in McKinleville has to drive to Eureka, there's no way they can walk, there's no way they can bike, yeah, okay, you know, that is a fairly long distance, but there is pretty good transit. And with the micro-transit program that Humboldt Transit just launched a week ago, um, that's actually going to be a great help for people who live, you know, in McKinleville who can't drive, you know, due to age or medical conditions or disability or whatever. Um, that's actually going to make Old Town more accessible for them. Um, so, you know, that's no longer an excuse. Whether you live in, within the city of Eureka or you're anywhere within those micro-transit zones, you have another way to get there. Um, you know, regarding children growing up downtown, you know, empty lots attract problems. Parking lots are empty lots. I don't have a drug dealer standing outside my house right now, filling a, a beggar's pockets, because my house is here and I'm here, and if somebody is standing on my front porch or on my lawn, you know, I'm going to tell them to leave, I'm going to call the police, I'm going to, just my presence is going to discourage them from being there. So having apartments is going to discourage people from hanging out in that empty lot at Fifth and D, um, which, by the way, was closed for several weeks. No one was able to park there because of the Lloyd Building being damaged in the earthquake. Um, and that did not, you know, cause Downtown Eureka to go into an economic spiral. You know, parking is not essential for healthy business. We can see that with Bay Shore Mall. It has acres of parking and it's half-dead. You know, what attracts people to a business is the density of other businesses, how many other people are patronizing it, you know? Having more people around makes it a more welcoming environment in Old Town and Downtown. So housing there is good. Um, you know, uh, today, I, I, somebody posted on somewhere that, you know, "Oh, well, there's 300 apartments for rent on Craigslist right now. They don't need to build more housing."
Thank you, Althea. Your time is up. We appreciate you being here.
Yep.
Colin?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Colin Fisk, Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. CRTP strongly opposes this ballot measure, which really can only be characterized as anti-affordable housing and anti-public transit. If approved, it would deal a significant blow to Eureka's economy and to local efforts to provide affordable housing and to combat the climate crisis. I'd like to remind everyone, uh, relative to the economic toll of the measure, that there are nearly $70 million in state funds already awarded specifically to the Link Affordable Housing Project and the Earth Center Transit and Housing Hub, both projects which the measure, uh, intends to block. So that's potentially another $70 million in state investments in Downtown Eureka down the drain, in addition to the loss of much-needed, walkable, transit-oriented, affordable housing, and an inspirational and potentially system-changing new multimodal transit hub. It's also important to remember that the measures proponents got this on It's also important to remember that the measure's proponents got this on the ballot by lying to local voters about the measure's content and impacts, and they're continuing to lie about it. The list of false and misleading statements they've promoted and continue to promote is too long for me to fully review. But the big lie is clearly that the measure would help the city meet its housing needs when every objective analysis shows that all it would do is block housing development where it's needed most. They're also promoting a bunch of falsehoods about transportation that I find particularly offensive in my role as a transportation advocate, including the myth that the city's current plans would remove almost all downtown parking. CRTP has mapped the abundant off-street parking in the downtown area, and more than a third of developable land is devoted to off-street parking, very little of which stands to be affected by the much-needed housing development that's planned. I ask you to do everything in your power to counter the lies, the falsehoods, and misdirections from the measure's proponents. Frankly, the initiative process has already been so corrupted by false and misleading information that the measure, in my opinion, shouldn't be on the ballot at all. But if it stays there, we can't allow its deep-pocketed campaign donors to flood our mailboxes and websites and airwaves with misinformation without making every effort to correct the record and inform voters about the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Kenny?
My name is Kenny Carzle. I'm here speaking on behalf of a security and an internal located in Downtown Eureka. I would like to remind everyone that the city report is supposed to present an objective assessment to inform city officials and voters of the likely effects of this initiative on city finances, land use plans, housing, and other topics. However, many of the potential negative impacts of the initiative contained in the city's report are based on incorrect assumptions and false or misleading statements. I would like to take a moment to clarify what the initiative actually does. The initiative amends two general plan amendments, the housing amendment and the mobility element. By creating new overlay designations, an overlay designation is a method of adding a new layer of regulations to the regulations already in place, and in other words, an overlay designation does not change its current general plan designation or zoning for any property, but adds a new set of rules and regulations. So the first is a housing-for-all overlay designation. This is at the former Jacobs Middle School site. This would give new life to the site and allow it to be redeveloped into a variety of housing types, serving all income levels as well as neighborhoods serving commercial uses. Even the city admits in the report that redevelopment of the Jacobs site would be beneficial to the safety of the neighborhood and allowing low, medium, and high-density housing, and could expand housing choices consistent with the goal LU V in the general plan. The second is the creation of an off-street parking overlay designation that would apply to twenty-one city-owned off-street parking lots. The city proposes to redevelop these parking lots into high-density residential units with no plan to propose a plan to replace the lost parking spaces. To address this problem, the off-street parking overlay will allow the city to redevelop the lots, but would require the city and its developers to ensure that each development preserves the existing amount of parking spaces. The city's current flawed plan would not only result in job losses and losses in retail spending, but would also result in fiscal impacts to the city, including loss of significant tax revenue. According to the city's most recent five-year financial forecast, up to seventy-three percent of the city's general fund revenues is derived from regional business and tourism. Business owners have been warning the city about these consequences for years and many, many meetings, yet this is still not even considered in the city's report. To be clear, the initiative isn't a different plan, it's an improvement on the city's current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Caroline?
Good evening. Caroline Griffith, resident of Eureka. I want to thank the council and staff for commissioning this report, which really reinforces the fact that this initiative is based on a lot of false and misleading claims. Not least among them is the assertion that the city's current plan for housing doesn't address housing for working-class people. It's a really sad fact that many working-class people fall into the category of low income. There's a great graph in the report of the professions and associated income levels that would be eligible for this housing. And I just want everyone to think about the fact that people working in education, healthcare support, the service industry, landscaping, farming, fishing, forestry, trucking, and social services are all considered low income, and that there are people in our community painting them as dangerous people because of their income level. This is obviously an economic problem larger than the city of Eureka, but luckily, the city has decided to prioritize building housing for these folks and building it in one of the coolest and most connected parts of the city. When those who work in these lower-paying jobs, which should absolutely not be lower-paying jobs, but that is totally a different conversation, when they're able to access affordable housing, it helps the economy, the entire region, because then they're able to save, get ahead, and spend more money in local stores, which is reflected in this economic impact report. So obstructing housing for working-class people, which is what this initiative will do, will certainly have a negative economic impact on the area. Also, building housing in Old Town and bringing more people to Old Town in the evenings will make the area safer. I have lived in Old Town. I've seen how it empties out at night. When more people live in an area and have their eyes on that area and feel connected to and responsible for that area, everyone is safer. So there's a lot of misinformation in this initiative that is debunked by this report, and I really hope that the city works to spread accurate information and educate voters about what is being put before them. An educated electorate is vital to democracy, so please do everything you can to make this information accessible to people and easy to read for the average person, like those working-class people who would benefit from the low-income housing that is at risk if this initiative passes, but who might be too busy working right now or tired to come to meetings like this. A public education about the fact that the Jacobs site is owned by the school district, not the city, and that the school district is negotiating to sell it to CHP, both agencies who have sovereign immunity and would not be affected by the zoning, is also really, really important to be done. So thank you for this report.
Thank you, Caroline. And is that Heather?
Hello again.
Hello.
There are many reasons why people are here in Humboldt County, and many of it is the beauty of nature. And based on this report, I believe there's an error in the data with false assumptions and false inference. And I also agree with a few of the speakers here. Low income, there's Humboldt County is high poverty rate. And there's many reasons why. There's not a lot of jobs offered or available. And many teachers that I know, people that have graduated, and they are professionals, they are still considered low income. I have a friend that's a teacher who's sixty years old, and her cap per hour is fifteen dollars an hour. She's considered low income. She can't afford housing. We need student housing. Students are living in their car, on the streets, in tents. We need more housing for low-income employees of Humboldt County as well as the vets. And for me, living in Humboldt County, we've got plenty of parking, and most of the people don't even have cars in Humboldt County, honestly. And there's reasons why. But we've got huge parking lots that are always empty at Red Lion, the Kmart parking lot, the mall. There are so many spots. And let's just say, for instance, the big event at the year at the Eagle House on Halloween, where everybody wants to be there, I never have a problem finding parking right there on the corner. So what we really need to do is redo the data and build some low-income housing in these areas other than just some of the lots that are there. And I know that the government also owns plenty of other buildings that are vacant. So I don't see why we can't use Danco. Danco actually does some great housing. I've been to one of the properties that they have in Riodale, where there's cute little cottages in a nice little lot. Each person has their own little yard. There's a community garden. And I really think we got to give back to our own community that live here for the community and really give everything that they can to the kids, the people. I've worked in a nonprofit in Humboldt County, and I'm also a student, and I've really witnessed firsthand with this. And I think that in regard to the economic impact, I think that by building many housing communities for those students, the vets, the employees, it'll only give a greater impact financially to all of those local businesses in reality. And yes, it would reduce the crime because even just like going to the co-op.
Thank you, Heather. Your time is up. Thank you. We appreciate you being here. Thomas?
Hello, thank you. My name is Thomas Edgerton. Pardon me if I speak quickly. I have several points to get through in three minutes. I am a resident of Eureka, a spokesperson for the transparent Humboldt Coalition, and I stand in opposition to this initiative. As soon as the text of this initiative was released, I knew that it was dishonestly representing itself. With this staff report, we're seeing how deep and how impactful that dishonesty is. Housing-for-all, quote-unquote, will guarantee that my children will never be able to move out and find housing near me so long as I live in Eureka. The authors in this initiative have created a housing overlay that will set our housing element back for a decade, put our general plan in conflict with state law, and remove future developments from public oversight. All of these points are well detailed in the staff report. I'd like to drive home that the initiative will only allow residential use and restrict developments to structures with ground-floor parking. If the authors of this initiative had bothered to talk to anyone who'd ever been involved in construction locally rather than political consultants in Southern California, they'd know this construction is referred to as a soft-bellied or soft-storied structure. This name comes from the tendency of this design to buckle under the pressures of an earthquake as the ground floors have no internal support. Our local history and projections of earthquake activity make this unfeasible in our area. Making these buildings earthquake-safe requires expensive construction techniques, and these costs are passed along to the residents. This makes it impossible to both qualify as affordable housing and generate enough revenue to pay back investors and loans in a reasonable amount of time. The initiative also allows only for residential development in these overweight areas, meaning that mixed-use projects and other commercial uses aren't allowed. No corner coffee shops, no ground-floor markets, no recreational spaces, no childcare, none of the services that would draw residents to downtown housing or even the Jacobs School site if that were actually on the table. So, the initiative is anti-housing and anti-business. So what exactly is it for? To my reading, exactly one thing, keeping Eureka taxpayers on the hook for parking at Arkley's Bank. Eurekaans have rejected this scheme through public oversight on the general plan at the ballot box and through the courts. How many times do you have to tell a billionaire no before they understand they're not entitled to rewrite the will of the people in this city? I understand the council can't simply throw it in the bin where it belongs. I also see no easy edits to make this initiative actually conform to its own title and keep the city from racking up monthly or even daily penalties for noncompliance with state law. Unless you know some legal loophole, I don't. The only actual option in front of you is to pass this along to the voters and trust us to, once again, tell Rob Arkley and his cronies that we need housing more than parking in Old Town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Thomas. Lyndon?
Hi, good evening, council.
Hi.
I just wanted to go over a couple of things I've been hearing in here. First, someone said empty lots are parking lots, but that's not the case. Parking lots are for parking, and those are to help businesses. I'm a local business owner. I've been doing my business for seventeen years now. And when I saw this initiative and the fact that they were going to use one of the parking lots behind us, the original report was done saying that only ten percent of our parking lot was being used. Clearly, that was untrue because it's at eighty-five to ninety-five percent capacity during work hours, and then in the evening it has parking still too. So hearing that there was a 2023 report, I'd be curious how they changed that, if they corrected that situation. On my block alone, there's thirteen businesses. City staff parks in there, and then customers. We also have one-hour parking on our street from L to M Street. Again, around us, though, there are no schools, no doctors, and no grocery stores. So as a parent on a personal level who has almost six kids now, I wouldn't live here even if I had to because there's no way to live here. There's a difference between being in a residence and living somewhere that is not for residents and having nothing around me to take my children, plus no parking to park my car to take my children places, makes zero sense. I know that the 2022 parking study was false, and it implied that this is not what's been going on with the parking lots. But clearly, if you talk to the local people, the local businesses, you'll see that we do actually use those parking lots. I was just down at Arts Alive on Saturday, and the city blocked off most of F Street and Second, all the way down to F Street, and I believe G. And there was the lowest turnout I've ever seen of Arts Alive. And I spoke to the local businesses and actually asked if anybody had spoken with them. Nobody's talked to us, like, from any of these consulting firms, to say what we want. And we are affected by this more than most people are. It's, this report doesn't think of all the actual businesses. And it's clear because no one has talked to us, contacted us. Someone saying that the mall parking is empty, that's a whole different situation. The mall is destroyed because of how the economy worked with malls all over the U.S. There is an empty amount of parking lots there, but that's not the case for the downtown. Safety issues are apparent, even if they haven't happened to one single person. It doesn't mean that they're not happening. So to say, well, it hasn't happened to me, so that's not true. That's the, I don't want to say that's very ignorant, but that's a very ignorant response to say because lots of things don't happen to us, but they're still happening out there. The plethora of businesses that are currently still open and vacant around town shows us.
Thank you, Lyndon. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle? Michelle, do you have a public comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Michelle Costantin. I'm a resident of Eureka, a business owner, a co-owner of the Housing-for-All and Downtown Vitality Initiative. The proponents of the initiative have created an impact report, which can be found on eureka-housing-for-all-2024.org. The purpose of our report is to provide an objective second opinion to the city's report, which presented a biased and, in some cases, false or misleading analysis of the initiative and the laws governing affordable housing in California. I would like to call your attention to a few of those points in particular. First, the initiative would not invalidate the general plan housing element because it does not prohibit the construction of affordable housing on the city-owned lots proposed by the housing element or on any of the twenty-one city-owned lots that would be subject to the initiative. Since it would not invalidate the housing element, it would not prevent the city or a developer from receiving funding for the construction of affordable housing. The initiative makes no changes to the city's overall RINAs numbers. It does not interfere with the city's ability to meet its RINA allocation. The initiative would not impact the city's obligation to plan for the construction of nine-hundred-and-fifty-two dwelling units through 2027, nor would the initiative impact the city's ability to construct three-hundred-and-thirty of those units on city-owned property or the minimum square footage for those city-owned lots that would be subject to the initiative. In fact, the initiative provides a pathway for more housing to be built by giving new life to the former Jacobs Middle School site. Preserving parking does not make affordable housing too expensive to build. In fact, the housing element already calls for the preservation of parking at three of the six sites awarded for development. Excuse me, the lots at Six and M, Fifth and D, and the City Hall parking lot on Six and L. The last of these is particularly interesting because the city wants to maintain existing ground-level parking for city employees. It is ironic that the city officials and staff do not share the same concern for the employees of local businesses when they are the heart of keeping the city going. Moreover, affordable housing with ground-level parking has been constructed all across California, including Los Angeles, Sacramento, Modesto, and San Jose, and name a few. The report is supposed to be, excuse me, the report is supposed to present an objective assessment of the initiative to help the city and voters. Instead, the city report is a taxpayer-funded advocacy piece for those city officials and staff whose vision for the city differs from that of the city voters and business owners. So I encourage all residents of Eureka to read the Initiative Impact Report, which again can be found at eureka-housing-for-all-2024.org.
Thank you, Michelle. Your time is up. And Roy?
Hello?
Hi, Roy.
Hi. My name is Roy Gomez. I've been a business owner in the city of Eureka for over twenty years now and commercial property owner and concerned citizen. And I certainly believe most people in the city are for affordable housing. And I think that all the businesses, including myself here, that are in favor of this are also hopeful that the city has a future booming tourism as well as booming commerce in Old Town. So I'm certainly in favor of preparing for the. So I'm certainly in favor of preparing for that growth and keeping our parking lots where they're at. And I think most people who are in agreement, most business owners, aren't the billionaires that one of your previous speaker alluded to. And there's several businesses, this isn't a one-man show here. This is several businesses that are concerned about this. And I'd like to read something from the California Election Code Section 922. "The legislative body of the city may submit the proposition or be voted upon at any succeeding regular or special election. May be called for the purpose of voting on a proposition by ordinance or resolution. The election shall be held not less than eighty-eight days after the date of the order of election." So I don't understand why, if the council can actually put this to vote in March or even call a special election, I don't understand why the council is holding back. Obviously, the initiative has got enough signatures. Let's get to vote on this thing, so you're not holding the economy back. I mean, that's jobs, that's funding. I mean, you guys are claiming that Citizens for a Better Eureka is holding everything back right now, but you have the ability to move this vote into March, but you're refusing to do that. So let's get it over with. Let's figure out where everybody stands, where the majority of people are with this situation, and put it to vote. I just, I don't understand why you wouldn't, you know, just vote to, just make a resolution, and let's vote on it in March, and let's get busy. It's either we're getting busy in parking lots downtown or we're gonna find a more appropriate place for these affordable housing units. I mean, it's just a matter of putting it to vote now. And, you know, I disagree that there's been deception in trying to get people to sign onto this petition. That's completely false, everybody-
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, time is up. Thank you for sharing. Do you see anybody else on public comment?
I see no one else.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for comments, but no action. Any comments? Councilmember Castellano?
Okay. Thanks to everyone who came and made comment on this. I would be curious to hear from the consultant Lance Harris. You know, there are some, I'll just call them statements made about, you know, the efficacy of your report. And I'm just wondering if you want to comment on that, thank you.
Sure, yeah, I mean, this was an independent report. You know, I think I mentioned it in the introduction, but our task was threefold. One is to see how the initiative would impact the development. And if the initiative adversely impacted development, then there would be impact. So it's sort of an if-then statement. And we found that because of the parking requirements and because of the additional construction costs and the general underlying economics of affordable housing development, that it certainly would. And then the second part was to try to quantify, at least, you know, the near-term impact of what's already been approved. We don't, you know, in the report, I think it clearly states that we don't have the exact construction numbers. We don't have, you know, looking into the future in terms of the, you know, the precise dollar amounts, but order of magnitude, you know, this would be the impact from the perspective of, you know, the construction of those developments. And then the subsequent revenue that would be created from retail spending, which would be the fiscal impact of those residents in the downtown area. There was no advocacy done on our part. This is, you know, economic and fiscal impacts are basically, you know, boring math that people don't necessarily love to read. So, you know, we do this as an independent body, and our relationship with, you know, the city was just to get information and data that would help populate, you know, our understanding of the dynamics of, you know, some of the more planning-related aspects of the general plan, et cetera. And, you know, we've done hundreds of these studies and have a long track record of doing so. And we certainly couldn't continue to do these if we were advocating for, you know, one group or another.
Yeah, thank you, Lance. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I actually just had a quick comment in my, it's an informative comment. I, my background, how I started a million years ago, was working as a financial auditor. And then I spent many years doing consulting with my husband, and, business consulting. It's really common, I just want to speak to something that was said earlier. Those disclaimers, when you work as a consultant, you almost, I've never didn't have a disclaimer in there. You always have a disclaimer because you're not an auditor. And when you're an auditor, that's a completely different threshold, and the disclaimer isn't there. But when you're consulting, it is there. So I just kind of want to put that out there just from an informative standpoint.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, well, Councilmember Castellano, and then Molten.
Sorry, I just had one more small comment. You know, I appreciate, you know, the facts in this report. I just want to say that, you know, I still think there's some data that's missing, and that's the number of truly affordable housing that's currently available in Eureka and how adding housing would affect people's capacity to save money, you know, that kind of information. There's an article by Sonia Wierak in the Eureka Time Standard from 2022 that talks about the, you know, the percentage of money that people spend on housing and that, you know, a Humboldt County resident would need to make twenty-one dollars, over twenty-one dollars, or, you know, forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight, four hundred and eighty dollars annually to afford renting a house, you know, a typical rental, which isn't the average, you know, average salary. So I just felt there's some, you know, not to, you know, throw shade on staff. I just want to say, you know, there's just still some data that's missing. And, you know, and along with that, some correlating data about the relationship between the rising cost of housing and rises in homelessness and just that, you know, across the country, and this is, you know, from Pew Trust, that changes in rents precipitate changes in rates of homelessness and that homelessness increases when rents rise by amounts that low-income households cannot afford. And just that the highest correlation between homelessness or homelessness is just the rising cost of rent. So, but, you know, thanks for the report. I just wanted to throw in some more data into the mix.
Thank you, Councilmember Molten?
Just to address one of the concerns that came up during public comment and to clarify the scope of this conversation, like, we're getting a report, we're not taking action. The action we already took was to put this on the next available ballot. So, of course, we could pass it whole cloth if we wanted to, or we can pass it to the voters, which is what we did before. Could we, City Attorney Luna, could we move this to the March ballot if we wanted to right now? Could we make that happen?
No, I don't believe that that's an option that's available to the city council. The next general election for the city is November, and that's what's called for in the election code.
Okay, thank you. I know we've said that before, but thank you for adding to this, that, to this part of the conversation. That was my only clarifying question, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, let's close this item. Shall we take a five-minute break? We're going to take a short bio break, and we'll be back for our last two items. With the Regional Climate Action Plan with Development Services Director Kenyon. I have to repeat that? Okay, so I'm going to repeat that. So we're going to reconvene the city council meeting tonight with the Regional Climate Action Plan update with Development Services Director Kenyon.
Derek, it's not letting me share my screen. Oh, thanks. Okay. People didn't hear that, it's just an update on the Regional Climate Action Plan. On October seventeenth, the Board of Supervisors voted to redirect funding towards reworking the current draft of the Regional Climate Action Plan. So I'm just gonna, tonight, explain what has happened and get the council's feedback to bring back to the Climate Action Plan Staff Working Group. So I'm gonna call it a cap from now on, the Climate Action Plan. The purpose of it is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions countywide with the goal of reducing emissions forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by 2030. The effort to develop the cap is being led by county staff with the participation of all seven incorporated cities in Humboldt. And the jurisdictions started discussing the cap in 2018, and an MOU was signed in 2019 committing to cap development. The county released a public review draft back in April of 2022, and Eureka City Council and the Board of Supervisors in May and June of 2022 respectively agreed to use that draft cap as the project description for the Necessary SEQA Environmental Impact Report, or EIR. So the cap has to undergo SEQA environmental review prior to adoption. Shortly thereafter, in around June to September, the county secured a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding from the Humboldt County Association of Governments to pay for the SEQA EIR for the cap. And then the county released a request for proposals and selected RINCON as the consultant to prepare the EIR. Sorry, Derek. So as RINCON evaluated the draft cap, they did not feel there was substantial evidence the greenhouse gas reduction measures could be achieved to meet the cap target in order to gain qualified status by the state. And so just to step back, qualified cap allows for SEQA streamlining of future development projects. So if future development projects are consistent with the qualified cap, they can avoid project-specific greenhouse gas emission analysis and mitigation in their environmental review. Also, a qualified cap has regulatory leverage, so the city and counties would be responsible for tracking and implementing it. And there's the worry that if it wasn't qualified, it wouldn't be taken as seriously. Also, a qualified cap improves opportunities for grant funding to implement climate adaptation strategies. And the grant that was obtained to pay for the EIR for the cap was a sub-allocation of HCOG's Regional Early Action Planning Grant from the state, and that's state money to help address the housing crisis. And it was allowed to be used on the cap based on the premise a qualified cap would streamline permitting of future residential development. If the cap is not qualified, the funds can't be used for the cap. So the county, on October seventeenth, at their October seventeenth meeting, they decided to, in order to pay for the cap revisions, they're going to authorize, they authorized the reallocation of the REAP grant funding to pay for redrafting the cap. That means that additional funding will now be needed for the EIR. So at the meeting, Director Ford presented a tentative schedule for cap completion. The revisions that RINCON is proposing, which I could talk more about, but I, if you would like, that would be done hopefully by March of twenty-four. And then an environmental document would, could be prepared, a draft environmental document by September of next year with a public review of that environmental document in October, a final EIR by December, and then adoption of the cap and its environmental document by January of 2025. And county staff is bringing back finals, more solidified schedule to the board either at their next meeting in November or early December. County staff also mentioned that they're gonna start doing quarterly reports on the progress of the cap, and they're looking into getting a climate resiliency officer, a dedicated staff member to implement the cap. That's it for my presentation.
Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Castellano?
Just a moment of, just a clarifying question. Will there be additional opportunities to give input then to the cap through RINCON as it goes kind of through the secondary process then?
Correct. They, in their scope of work proposal, that was an attachment to your report. It talks about how they plan on doing additional public outreach as well as working with the staff of the jurisdictions involved.
Yeah, I just saw that that was optional. Is that something that we need to give input on tonight, the public outreach? Or it was kind of a, if people wanted to pay that additional amount?
I believe that the county agreed to the entire scope, but I can confirm that.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, one of my questions is, where's the, I call it a climate action director or something, but, so that's gonna be decided at a later date, a climate resiliency officer? That would work mainly for the county? Or is this funding-dependent? I mean, what's kind of the strategy behind that?
Right, it was just brought up by the director as something that the county is looking into, but it hasn't been fully fleshed out yet, so feedback on that would be helpful. They're currently, there's, we haven't identified any funding for somebody to be in charge of, you know, coordinating implementation of the cap at this time. But there are definitely funding opportunities out there.
Yeah, to me, I think to adopt a plan as I see here, we have to have that. Need a full-time person to do the implementation of this. Like, it won't happen unless that happens. So I kind of, I'm fully supportive of that, and I hope, you know, we can relate to the county, whatever, whatever it takes. Besides, like, seeking grant funding that we get three years from now to implement a cap that won't be done for two more years. I'm frustrated, I'm sorry, but I think we need to really press that and make sure that the county does that. And if not, then we should do that, so that's my-
I can expand on that a little bit. The county actually hired a consultant to interview local jurisdictions about that climate resiliency officer. And the discussion was what that vehicle would look like and how we would get there, whether it's a city employee, I mean, whether it's a county employee, whether it's a private entity or something like that. And so they're definitely serious about it and are looking into what would be the best way for all of the jurisdictions within the county for that climate resiliency officer and who it would work for and that type of thing. And I was interviewed by that consultant, too.
Thank you.
Anything further? We'll open this item up for public comment. Welcome. Oh, you need to turn your microphone on.
There we go. Tom Wheeler, Executive Director of Epic. You're right to be frustrated. It's taken us five years to get to this point. It'll take us until 2025 if we stay on schedule this time to have a climate action plan with a deadline of 2030. So we have five years then if we are waiting to do climate action to reach our 2030 target. So this makes it imperative that we do climate action now. We don't need to wait for the climate action plan for the city of Eureka to take meaningful climate action. And I would urge the city council to start working with staff, start directing staff, to come back with those sort of actions that are going to be necessary to achieve our future climate targets. We had a draft version of the cap. You can look within that for what are the sort of things that the city can do to begin climate action. I think that your point, Councilmember Bauer, on the resiliency officer is also a good one. So by contrast with Humboldt County and our climate action plan, Humboldt State or Cal Poly Humboldt has had two caps developed. They have three sustainability officers within their program for a student population of around seventy-five hundred, right? This is a proposal to have- That's not sufficient. We need to have, uh, resources within the cities so that the city can do things on its own. That is not reliant on a county planning department that has kind of failed to move the ball adequately, uh, with any sort of pressing urgency, the pressing urgency of our climate crisis. So, uh, you know, this is a real opportunity for leadership from the city council, and I look forward to working with you. And, uh, us environmental groups are always ready to partner with you, and we can help provide advice and support for you as you advance climate action. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it over to Zoom, and it looks like we have Colin.
Good evening again. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. CRTP supports strengthening the cap as proposed, and we're happy also that the decision was made to exclude industrial point sources once and for all, if you were following that debate. Um, however, I think it just needs to be absolutely clear that this decision does delay the cap yet again. Um, and, you know, as you've discussed, what was supposed to be a 10-year plan, starting in 2020, will now be at the best a five-year plan, and still have to accomplish everything by 2030 that the original 10-year plan would have. But, um, as I think Mr. Wheeler suggested, the good news is we know already the rough outlines of what needs to be done. So our request is for you to start taking the needed climate actions now in a comprehensive and coordinated way without waiting for the cap to be finalized. Um, and as Councilmember Bauer suggested, that will require dedicated staff, but really, that's not just at the county, but also at each of the jurisdictions, including the City of Eureka, uh, to make sure that, that these actions are actually taken, uh, in a coordinated way. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Caroline?
Good evening. Caroline Griffith, Director of the North Coast Environmental Center. Um, Colin and Tom basically just said everything that I was gonna say. I figured it would just seem a little, uh, suspect if I just abruptly pulled my hand down. Um, like everybody else who's been watching this over the last few years, we're really anxious to see the process move forward in a way that actually results in a qualified cap and that lays out actionable, achievable measures to reduce our emissions. Um, we are generally supportive of the effort to reanalyze and strengthen emissions reductions measures in the cap, but also, again, are concerned that this could take a really long time. Um, and we're already so close to that first deadline of 2030. Um, so in terms of, uh, actions that can be taken now, in addition to the, the city council, um, and city staff just really being on top of the county and working to make sure that they do meet those, those deadlines and that, the timeline that they set out, um, there are things that could be happening in this moment. And climate change is a, is an opportunity for us to make changes to the way that we live and to also do it in an equitable way and do it in a way that can improve the quality of life for people in our communities. So if, for example, um, we could shift our transportation systems and increase our transit options so it can be more functional for our elders, for children, for people living with disabilities, and other people who don't drive for various reasons, that is something that could be happening without a climate action plan right now. Um, we could also, um, implement incentive programs and systems that help low-income people to afford electrification and enjoy the health benefits and the economic benefits of getting off of polluting fossil fuels. Um, but as has been mentioned, one thing that's really gonna be vital for this is to have actual dedicated staff and people who are working directly on it. So not just advocating at a county level that there is someone working on this, uh, but also making sure that there are city staff who are working on it as well. Um, and it's the sort of thing that can kind of pay for itself, right? This person who's working in this position could actually be looking for the funding sources that help keep the ball rolling and make sure that we are making these changes that we need to change, not just because of climate change, but also just for increased livability in our communities. So thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. And Heather?
Well, hello again.
Hello.
Um, I like the idea of, uh, being able to hire, uh, for the city, uh, some sort of resilience officer, somebody to oversee, uh, climate, uh, action plans efficiently. And I would suggest an environmental advocate and not necessarily somebody with a political background or business only, perhaps a Native American tribal member with, um, experience in, in areas such as this because Native Americans are the stewards of the lands. And, um, you know, it is impossible to sustain the planet at the rate of globalization, which is really with the burst of the Industrial Revolution. Now this world globally is on steroids with, uh, the climate issues. And, uh, some of, some factors also influence global initiatives. That is important to remind the business owners and the, the community that green energy and lower gas, uh, greenhouse gases, uh, they leave the smallest carbon footprint. And those that utilize these initiatives also have less governmental intervention with that. Um, you know, we, of course, we wanna emit fewer greenhouse gases, carbon emissions, toxins, pollutants. And of course, in our beautiful county of Humboldt, uh, we still have some ongoing issues that I know that Fish and Wildlife, the Department of Forestry, you know, even the county itself is working on stopping some of these poisoning of the waterways, the air pollution, and the use of fossil fuels. And I, I, you know, I have to figure out where, where we're also going with the, um, the wind turbines. I think there's, you know, I, I know that the Native American tribes were against them on land, but I also think it's not effective to have them in the ocean, uh, because all of the, this, uh, human intervention, uh, in the ocean, the, these, these actions create other things like earthquakes and long-lasting effects to our biodiversity. So there really has to be some, some, um, implemented change. But I would also suggest if you want to give back to the Native American tribal community in Humboldt County, perhaps see if we could also utilize Native Americans as land stewards. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And seeing no one else?
Uh, Sam?
You do see somebody?
They just, oh, sorry, nope, that was a clap. Not a hand raise. They look very similar.
Okay. All right, so then we'll go to future agenda items. Did you have any final comments actually on that action plan? Sorry. You did? Okay. Councilmember Moulton?
Uh, thank you. Actually, what I had was a few questions that, um, came up for me. Uh, um, so the point source emissions were removed. I can totally understand why. Um, but what does that do? Thanks, question for you. What does that do to our ability to, um, regulate point source emissions going forward?
Kristen can answer this, too.
Or, sorry, Kristen, thank you.
Um, excuse me, Director Kenyon. Um, we'd still could be regulating them just the same as we could before, correct?
Yeah, it's just that we couldn't take credit for reductions because they're not related to point sources because they're not in our baseline inventory.
Okay, but regulating point source emissions can be part of the cap going forward?
Right. There is some restrictions on regulating point sources because there's federal and pream, and state preambulations on that. Um, but yeah, to the extent that we can do that, we, we, we can look into it. Which point sources were you thinking of specifically?
Like? Uh, just in general, our ability to regulate industries and town as, you know, as we grow and different things come in with, uh, potential pollution sources.
Yeah. I know there's been talk about, uh, the, um, port development and potential electrification of that. Um, and it's definitely gonna be a continuing conversation.
Okay. It's on the table where we don't run up against governments above us. Correct. Um, and then, um, I know we, we do a lot of stuff to reduce, uh, emissions from the City of Eureka, um, as a, as a functioning entity rather than a, like, as a, as a business, you know, with our cars and things. Um, so we do, do we have staff, uh, who's working on that for us?
Yeah, if you look at, in the, the current draft cap, the different measures, they definitely are being implemented by different departments. Uh, for instance, Public Works is going for grants to get a ton of EV charging stations, and Community Services is working on our, um, uh, organics, uh, waste to, you know, that's part of it, too. And then, um, Planning, um, is working on the, uh, you know, reducing parking requirements and increasing bicycle, you know, parking requirements and things like that, the land use components of it. So, um, yeah, we're all already doing things, uh, that are called for in the plan, like, for instance, bike paths and, uh, trails. That's part of it, too. And it's something that the city's working hard on.
I do love trails. Um, okay, so the work's not, not happening yet. We are doing this work. Um, we just don't have a dedicated...
We just haven't called it a climate action plan and coordinated it under that umbrella and with that lens.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, um, you brought up a good point, uh, Director Kenyon, about so many departments working on it. And that's where I see the coordinated effort, you know, um, within our own city, um, and taking an active leadership role. Maybe I'm, I'm showing my hand about a future agenda item, about a climate resiliency project manager for the city. But I just want everybody, I, I just read a report on James Hansen, who was the, basically the godfather of, uh, global warming. He's the one that created it in 1970s, talked about the issues of CO2 emissions. And he just said we blew past, um, 1.5 degrees Celsius, which is the goal of the IPCC, right? We're past that. There's no, there's no turning back. And so the significance of this issue is like, pretty much everything we do should be revolved around reducing emissions, figuring out how to live, live differently. And so, you know, it's a significant issue. And I, I look at the cap and I look at things like increase EV adoption from 1% to 34%. So 17,000 vehicles in the next seven years when you can't even buy one, you know? So we have these kind of goals that are unattainable, let's just admit it, um, which require us to think differently about how we're gonna do this. Coordinated effort that is way more than what I see here, you know, hydrogen fueling. We're talking about developing hydrogen as a source and all these things, but we really need to be focused on coordinating our efforts and not probably relying on the county, you know, for this. Us taking the leadership role, which we do, like we do with housing and other things. So, um, I just want us to really think deeply about this. And, and I want city staff to be involved in this cap development as much as we can and help inform what the county's doing and, and make sure that, like, uh, some people have said, we don't have time to wait. We're not gonna wait for this thing to get developed. We need to do, take action now. So that's actually my future agenda item. I'm gonna just jump the gun a little bit. Climate resiliency project manager.
So just to clarify, I mean, just to provide more, um, input on that, um, we have, you know, measures ourselves. We have been, staff, Public Works, Community Services have been involved in the review of the cap and all of those things. Um, to be, um, open about what I talked about with the consultant is I felt it would be appropriate if there was a third party that was coordinating, because there is some overlap amongst every jurisdiction in the county. And my, my input was that I see it being beneficial because we have this in all of our different departments, whether it's Robin in Community Services or Jesse in Engineering or, you know, um, our planning staff. All of those people are still doing that. But having a third party that is objective and can come back to council with a report about where we're at in meeting these targets, and having it so that it's not just one person, it would be a firm, that would be some master agreement with all the jurisdictions, and they would be assigned, okay, this is the measures that the City of Eureka has, provide a report and recommendations on how to get to those measures and report back to council. That's what I had recommended to the consultant that was hired. Whether that happens, I don't know, but, um, it seems to me that having that third-party objective reporting could be beneficial.
Yeah, for reporting, but I think about implementation. You know, it's a little different.
Yeah, and also to provide resources to get there. And, you know, it would be not just reporting, but, you know, coming in, okay, this is your target. These are some resources to get you to that target, whether it's grant funding or whether it's community outreach, whatever it may be, but it would involve that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments? Moving along to future agenda items, Councilmember Bauer. Segue right over.
Yeah, and this can be more in-depth discussion, but I think it would be fun to explore what a climate resiliency, and I think our classification and personnel would be a project manager, somebody that helps facilitate all of our different departments towards a goal of achieving, you know, our, our climate reduction, um, targets. It's something I think that's not that unobtainable and something I think that's worth us exploring.
Okay. It's like we got thumbs up all around.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other future agenda items? Councilmember Castellano?
Um, the first one, uh, let's see, two, I have two for today. Um, let's see, one is, uh, I would love to get a timeline for the participatory budgeting that we talked about, maybe in our, uh, sometime in December, just a kind of plan for when we're gonna go through that process, uh, with the community. Um, and, and that's something that council already, you know, in strategic visioning, talked about. So I, I know it's on the radar. Um, and then, uh, the other one is, um, bringing back the resolution for the ceasefire in Gaza. Though, though I would like to have maybe a couple of council members, uh, working on it. That would be, uh, maybe a meeting with other leaders in the community before it came back. I guess I should have done one and then the other. So I guess the first one is your consensus on the, um, participatory budgeting.
Thumbs up all around.
Okay, now the second one.
For...
Now the second one?
For the second one, I...
Is the ceasefire, um...
Right. I would hope for a little clarity because when you say to come back, it's like, well, when? After Thanksgiving or in December?
On the 21st.
Okay.
Potentially, yeah.
So, I just had a question about that. So would that be appointing two council members tonight, or would that be appointing two council members on Tuesday?
I think we could appoint two tonight, if that's okay.
Can I get two more? Councilmember Fernandez? Councilmember Castellano? Great, thank you so much. Love you. What's that?
How will that work? You guys are gonna write it and then bring it back? And then we're gonna look at it?
Or make changes.
Yeah, I was just wondering because, I mean, there's no way for us to have a conversation about it as council outside. And so it's just gonna be kind of like a, hello, here's the document.
So we would need to agendize this?
Yeah, I mean, we can agendize a discussion about whether or not to, uh, to have a resolution or to adopt a resolution. I think having an example of one that perhaps, uh, Councilmember Fernandez and Councilmember Castellano have worked on, uh, as a starting point, uh, for that discussion makes sense to me. And I'm happy to assist in that effort as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay, city manager reports?
Good evening, Mayor and city manager. Good evening, Mayor and city council. Been a long night. I just have a couple of things, uh, to discuss, um, both positive. Um, the first one is the emergency, um, warming centers that we've set up again this year. Um, we had a full year of discussions trying to promote other, um, community-based organizations to come and help out. And, um, we sent out a press release recently. Um, it is in effect right now. We were able to recruit, um, another, um, faith-based organization, um, in the Faith Center, um, out on Bay Street. So, um, we now have two potential locations to use for this. One, uh, the, um, um, Lifehouse Church on Hubbard, and then the second one will be the Faith Center on Bay Street. Um, this year, we were a lot more coordinated with our effort. coordinated with our effort. We've been promoting volunteers and recruiting volunteers. I'm happy to say that we've recruited over 50 volunteers already. And I'll report on a training that's going to be happening tomorrow night. But as far as the procedure this year, it'll be the same thresholds for the weather when the emergency warming centers get triggered. The minimum temp will be 33 degrees, any 40 mile per hour wind, any wind chill that's at 33 degrees, and then up to one inch of rainfall between the hours of 4:00 PM and 4:00 AM. And those are the triggers that will get the warming center started. When that does happen, we've established four locations throughout our community to pick folks up and get them to the facility, depending on which facility that was open. Those four facilities will be St. Vinnie's Dining Facility on Third Street, the Saco Amphitheater next to the Adorni Center, Betty's Blue Angel Village on Washington and Costa, and then also the Hope Center on HNI up by Wood Street. And so, those are typical location where community members may be. And so, we'll be able to pick them up, and we'll have certain timeframes at those locations where people can be at, and we can pick them up. So, as far as the training, if anybody's interested, the website is euricawarmingcenter.com. It has all of the information related to these facilities and then also information on if you want to volunteer. And then tomorrow night at the Lifehouse Church on Hubbard, there will be a training for volunteers at 6:00 AM. Excuse, 6:00 PM? That'd be rough. Yeah, we wanted to get the mayor to be able to make it, so he started at 6:00 AM.
Awesome.
6:00 PM. And it'll be recorded. And so, folks who can't make it can get the training via recording. So, we're happy to say that. We're having weekly meetings with other jurisdictions within the county. I'm happy to say that Eureka is well ahead of a lot of our other community members, and we're disseminating that information to the county, Arcadas, other Humboldt, and other regions in the county. And then, secondly, another volunteer opportunity for this Friday, it is a holiday, and from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we're looking for volunteers to assist with decorating Old Town and Downtown. The, what did we find at the munis? What do you call them? The garland. I always have a hard time. We went to the basement of the muni, and I can't believe I showed Assistant City Manager Powell what I just called the wreath, but it's garland that's down there. And I'm like, God, this thing's going in the dumpster. And she was ecstatic. So, they've completely been refurbished. They're all lighted up and ready to go. And we're looking for people to help hang the garlands and the bows and the live posts, decorating the gazebo, cleaning and replant, and replant, replanting the clocks. That can't be-- That's what it says here. Okay, replanting the flower baskets on the clock is what I should say. And then, any volunteers that have a 16-foot A-frame ladder would be really helpful for us. So, that would help us with hanging the garland. But either way, come with no tools or a lot of tools. We want people to come out on this Friday, 10:00 AM to 2:00, and we'll be meeting at the gazebo, correct? Yep. All right. And that's all I got.
Sorry, I'm just--
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. So, we will carry on to council reports. Can we do it in five minutes, do you think, or pretty close? We'll try. Councilmember Costellano?
I'll be quick. I participated in the Live Well Humboldt Design Team Meeting and attended the Humboldt Transit Authority Meeting. There's some exciting things happening with microtransit that are kind of a slow unveil. Look for it soon.
Oh, that was quick. Councilmember Molton? Can you beat that?
Thank, no. I can't. I have a whole thing I wanted to say. Actually, I just wanted to talk really quickly about donating to homeless shelters. One of the hardest things to do around here is stay dry. So, donating money is the most useful thing you can do. If you want to donate something, the most sought-after items are socks and tarps. So, help keep people dry while they're sleeping and keep their feet dry. I'm looking, that's all I'm at. I'm looking forward to the JPA meeting tomorrow. Always a good crowd. You know, you get in a room with all the firefighters in the city. It's uplifting. Exactly. Yes, thank you. And I attended the Chamber Two by Two, which is always very enlightening. And although it's not city business strictly, the Kiwanis of Henderson Center Women in Business Luncheon, which honored three women in business. And I just appreciate that although one of those honorees was a woman in nonprofits specifically, all three of the women that were honored were from nonprofits, including Jessica Reebholtz, who runs the Parent Nutrition Center, which is helping provide WIC food to families without stigma. I've been a mom on WIC and going to the grocery store and pulling all those little coupons out. And it's humiliating in a way. It's definitely stigmatizing. So, the fact that folks can go and just get the nutritious food they need for themselves and their family is just an incredible service. Also, the Companion Animal Foundation and Hospice of Humboldt, leaders in those organizations were recognized. And I just appreciate the Kiwanis Club for putting that on. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Finally had some contact with the Eureka City School Board President Mike Duncan, who had given me the update that they've narrowed it down from, I think, 15 applicants for superintendent to five, which they will be interviewing during a special meeting this Friday, and then likely have someone to appoint and take on that position starting in mid-December to get them up and running by January.
Can I ask you a quick follow or clarifying question on that? So, is there any public input on that at all? Do you know?
Yeah, it's a special closed session, from what I understand.
Special closed session, so no public can be--
Well, no, there'll be public comment before they go into closed session, but-- Right. Yeah. And unfortunately, I don't have the time in front of me, but it does start in the morning on this Friday.
Great.
Yeah. So, other than that, constituent services, connecting people with various departments. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll forego all the meeting attendance stuff, but I'll say the greatest thing I saw was P Street. I don't know if it was one of the first streets to actually get a permit and close it off to have basically a Halloween block party. And it was amazing. And Big Brothers, Big Sisters were there. You know, there's always challenges when you're trying to close roads and people, you know, trying to get home and whatnot. But I think that can all be worked out. But there was, I mean, I think 1,000 people came through, and it was super fun and safe. And I'm glad we're doing that in the city. It's a really amazing benefit that everybody seemed, most people seemed to enjoy. So, it was, I'm proud of the community for putting that together and doing it. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
I was out of town for a week, but my family got to attend that Halloween party block thing. And oh, my gosh, the pictures. So, it looked amazing. So, I got to do the Chamber Two by Two, got to do the Kiwanis Luncheon. I'm friends with Jessica. It was really cool to get to see her honored for something that is a genuinely important service. I've shared this before, but I'm going to share it really quick. During the pandemic, when there was a shortage on formula, my youngest son is dependent on formula for nutrition because of feeding issues. And Jessica was driving down to Los Angeles regularly to make sure that the parents up here were able to get WIC. And we, that was our workaround, is that we found out that we could get WIC for our son because we adopted him. And that was how we basically were able to do it, was the combination of our WIC office helping us get WIC for Finn, and then Jessica literally driving to LA to make sure that people up here had formula for their children. So, I just have to put that out there. There's like nothing I wouldn't do for her. So, and then I went to the Chamber ribbon cutting for the Museum of Senema. And then, just a reminder, this is Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you. Right at 9:30. Thank you, friends. It's been a wonderful evening. A good meeting starts on time and ends on time. We're out.